Good evening. Welcome to this March 6, 2023, meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We'll call the meeting to order and first call your attention to the Open Meetings Act posted here in the council chambers. If you'd now please join me in rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Granquist.
Here.
Arnz.
Here.
Webb.
Here.
McCarthy.
Here.
Muren.
Here.
Snorton.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Hildebrand.
Here.
Okay, we begin this meeting with a special item, kind of a new wrinkle, a public input session, to receive potential council recommendation if necessary regarding possible special election for police expansion and/or street repairs. And to introduce this and give a little background as to why we're doing this tonight, I will call on Andy Colvin, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as the agenda item, it kind of speaks for itself as to why we have this item on the agenda. There's been a lot of discussions, internal and external. There's been a lot of community conversations that have taken place as well in certain circles and among private citizens that we've all had maybe on our own in our free time. Well, what the plans are now for, in particular during the last bond issue that failed last November, the two projects that came out of there as maybe a little bit more palatable for the public would be the police station expansion as a priority as well as street repairs. And so, we were asked as a staff by the mayor, who wanted to have this discussion in an open forum and allow the public to comment, and also to allow the council to have an opportunity where you're not asked to make a decision on something, an ordinance or resolution, but just to have the discussion and ask questions to find out a little bit more about how this could work, particularly in terms of what kind of tax could be used to fund these improvements if we were to seek new revenue to do so. Now, a sales tax election can take place every, only at a primary or a general election. So that means that you're may primary or in your November general of that particular election year. If it fails, you basically have 23 months before you can have another one, which effectively means two years later. So, we can't revisit a sales tax election until November 24. So, the other options that we have would be a special election. And if we wanted to, you could look at property taxes. And I think that from what I'm gauging and what I'm hearing, that is not something the council's probably interested in, but it is an option to talk about if you like. The other option would be an occupation tax. And that is a little bit more flexible tax. That's one that the city has implemented before. That's the one that funded the improvements to Memorial Field as well as Aquaventure. So, that is something that could be had at a special election that the council can call. So, I think really what I would like to do is just maybe start there and let mayor and council kind of guide this conversation as how you'd like to see fit. We are prepared with answers for potential revenue generation, what options there are. And I guess just to start it, for one particular idea that has been floated is to implement a tax, occupation tax on alcohol sales. That would be all alcohol sales. So, whether you go to a bar, whether you go to a restaurant, you go to a retail establishment and you buy beer, you buy liquor, whatever it is, you pay a certain percentage tax on that purchase. I see we're bringing up some numbers that we have here. As you can see, we've got a few different scenarios that what we anticipate, and these are estimates only, these are complete estimates as our best guess. Randy Gates can maybe go through in a little bit more detail on how he reached some of these numbers. But basically, that is one option that we've come, that we've talked about to have to fund police station expansion. There are other taxes. The cities in the past, as I said, had an occupation tax on food as well, so restaurants, prepared food, and also a lodging tax. State law, if you have voter approval, is a lot of flexibility on what that amount can be for tax. There really essentially are no limits. It's really what you think your community can support to do so. In the case of our last bond issue we had for Memorial Field and Aquaventure, Randy, I believe, was that, was that four percent, or what was the lodging tax and food and beverage? Could you just kind of review that a little bit?
Food and beverage occupation tax was 2%. And that was both alcoholic beverages and prepared food. The lodging tax was 4%.
Thank you, Randy. So I guess I'll maybe stop there. Let the council kind of, again, ask questions and guide this discussion however you would want to see fit, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Andy. Yeah, I think that's a good summary of why we're here wanting to have this discussion. Since November, I think we've made some concerted efforts to gather public input on top priorities in terms of community improvement projects. I think Andy accurately stated that those preferences, as we see them come in, rank the police station expansion and street repairs high. And we're here today to talk about creative ideas to find ways to fund these priorities, recognizing that if we count them as priorities, the longer we wait to do them, given the environment we live in with cost inflation, the more expensive they become. And so, again, there's no set plot course here. There's nothing set in stone. This is purely meant to be the first step in a discussion to formulate a plan to move forward on these community projects. So, I guess I would open up to council first, any comments, but then shortly thereafter, we will receive public input and that will be guided like it is typically with each person wanting to speak, having five minutes, which will be counted by our city clerk, and reminders of when you get to one minute left, you'll get the yellow card and then a red card to stop. So, with that, council, any opening statements here or comments before we go into public input?
I would just say this is a good opportunity for the input to be had and you guys to get up here and say, this is what we think's important and this is how we think we should pay for it. We should, either we should do this or not. And I think these are the times that people need to step up and talk and say something, even though you might be uncomfortable doing it. We need your input. We need your guidance to hear what, we just can't sit here and guess what the community wants us to do and how you want, and how you want to pay for it. So, it's a great opportunity to do that.
May I counsel you?
I think it's important, like you said, Justin, these are, this needs to be a community-driven project and not a council-driven project. You know, I think that's important. That's community-driven, so.
Okay, with that, we'd invite anyone wishing to make comments on this to come forward. And yes, when you come forward, if you'd please sign the form in front of you and state your name as you begin. You're good.
Donna, here it is. And I didn't come really prepared to say anything, but the food business is a tough business. So, I'm going to say right off the bat, that's a hard business to put occupation tax on. If the world knows there's a little bit more money in alcohol. But I guess I would like to, the city roads and, at least, there's really a whole community thing. And I would like to see something that was placed more evenly against all things other than that. I'm not sure on that hotel, 4%, is that 4% additional lodging tax? Is that a 4% total?
It would be 4% for the city's lodging tax. That would be in addition to the county's existing.
How much more is that than it is presently? I should know that.
I believe the county has a 4% tax and I think the state's is a 1%. I know the county has 4.
And then you could add another 4%?
Yes. That's what this.
The city currently doesn't have a lodging tax imposed, correct? It's 0%.
Right now, we do not. We had the 4% lodging tax to pay for the wreck facility bonds and that's paid off a couple of years ago. And when that paid off, we eliminated lodging tax.
Again, 4% is pretty hefty. So, that's a big, let's start the fight and see people have a decision to bring meetings to the community. Businesses to stay with them.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Good evening.
That mic is on. Sorry Jim, just a second. Just want to make sure that mic is on. There we go.
I guess my, first of all, the agenda did not mention anything about a new tax being complicated or contemplated at this meeting. So, I think if you're really wanting public input, I think the agenda should explain that, other than just, we're talking about how we are going to move forward with these. In my opinion, there should be no new taxes. Back before the bond, the, excuse me, the $110 million tax increase was floated, the city, on their Facebook page bragged about record revenues and the great financial condition that the city is in. And now, we're saying we don't have enough money to even pay for basic street repair, public safety needs. That's very concerning to me. I don't think the city has a revenue problem. I think we have a spending problem. Spending is completely out of control. I've come to you before with concerns about spending only to be attacked for doing so. Our property taxes are out of sight. The city portion of the property taxes on my home have increased 126% in nine years. That's about triple the rate of wage increases over that period of time. The city needs to do a deep dive into their budget with the committee of citizens to find areas to cut so they can fund the necessary street repairs and police expansion. We have street projects that include elaborate aesthetics. I question how much extra was spent on Benjamin Avenue for undergrounding all the utilities, stamped concrete, landscaping with irrigation systems. This is stuff the Parks Department has to maintain forever. At this point in time, we need just basic street repairs and maintenance. We've just gone off the rails in terms of what we've been building. The city has money to fund these needs. It just needs to be allocated correctly. I wrote a letter to the editor about how the police station could be funded completely without a single tax increase. We've got an assistant city administrator position. It's not filled. There's $200,000 a year in that. Over five years, it's next to a million dollars. I think we've got a huge amount in our budget for landscaping. If I'm not mistaken, it's well over a million dollars, maybe almost 2 million. You know, I hear a story when new staff are hired, that offices are remodeled, new furniture is purchased. I hear there's remodeling going on in the previous city administrators, assistant city administrators' office. Streets offices are being remodeled, huge pay increases for some staff, far beyond the cost of living adjustments that were announced. It goes on and on. I question who is in charge of the spending and watching out for the citizens. Again, I don't believe we have a revenue problem. I believe we have a spending problem. We don't need any new taxes. We need to prioritize what we've got. Cities had huge tax increases over the last five to 10 years, and we don't have anything to show for it except for a lot of streets in very difficult condition and the police station that needs to be modernized. I really think we need to look at our existing revenues before we start looking. We need more new revenues.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Evening.
Evening, council, mayor, city officials, the public. My name's Brad Brooks, and I'm here to say that it's a matter, in my eyes anyway, that if we don't do something about the police station and we don't do something about the roads, we're creating a huge public safety concern. I'm a member of the Civil Service Commission for the city of Norfolk, and I'm somewhat familiar with everything that's going on in the police and fire. And some of the things really need some support. I also made a phone call earlier this afternoon, and I didn't hear this brought up, but evidently there's some discussion. There's already possibly a date set up to hold a vote on this occupation tax. We're limited in how long we have to present this. And as near as I can tell, if we're going to request a special election, something has to be submitted by no later than April 24th to meet everything that needs to be done. There's some costs associated with this, and I'm sure this isn't going to make Jim McKenzie real happy, but the stuff, the information that I got from the county clerk today and what I've heard tonight concerns me that we need some more open discussion on this. It's like there's an inability to necessarily share everything that's going on. There's actually more that she shared with me in response to asking my questions that I'm not even going to bring up here. But it is concerning. But I really feel that we need to conduct a special election to get some things going in regards to the police station and the streets. And the streets especially are in rough shape. I've seen the patching crews out in the last week to 10 days as the weather has improved, but in my estimation, in a lot of cases, they're fighting a losing battle. We've got to do something major to get these things under control. So, unless anybody's got any questions for me, that's my comment.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? Good evening.
My name is Kay Frankavilla. I had no intention of speaking tonight. In fact, I didn't even know what was on the agenda because when someone sent it to me, I was unable to open it. I had no idea that you were going to be discussing taxing again. I will tell you that as a citizen, and I think the citizens of Norfolk were very clear last November, we are really feeling taxed to death. It just scares me that, when I look at what our taxes are, my husband and I just paid our mortgage off and we were celebrating thinking, wow, we don't have to, you know, more house payments. Well, that's not true because there's tax payments and our tax payments are pretty darn high between the taxes and the insurance. So, yeah, unfortunately, you can't pay those sorts of things off. But the point is that we have to look at other ways. I thought Jim McKenzie, as usual, he did such a great job and I just kind of want to say ditto with most of the comments he said. I agree with pretty much everything he said, and I think a lot of the problem is we have a spending problem. When I saw a list of city salaries, and I was shocked. I was truly shocked by what our key people in this city get paid. So, I also see a lot of things that I feel as a citizen is unnecessary. You know, they keep putting in the roundabouts, they're doing beautification, a lot of things that Jim mentioned. We just have to, I mean, personally, I just, I've tightened my belt. If things get to the place where, gosh, I, you know, things get tight, I don't go out to eat. I don't, you know, I don't go on vacation, whatever. Now, I'm fortunate that hasn't happened to me yet because I have a husband who works. I'm retired. But there's a lot of people in this city that don't, aren't in the situation me and my husband are in. They, I have a lot of friends that are living on a fixed budget and they're struggling. They're really struggling. Now, I suppose one of the, one of the answers is to have people from outside the city help pay for it. You know, if you do the occupation tax, you could say, oh, when people come to Norfolk, we're going to make them pay for it. I don't really think that's fair, first of all, but I think that you really could possibly cause people, conventions, things that might come here, that they, they will look at things like that. So, if you do go that route, I hope it wouldn't be any more than 2%. I would lean more favorably towards a tax on alcohol because I'm not much of an alcohol consumer, other than the occasional glass of wine. So, I don't know what the solution is. We do need something done with the police. We do need some basic roads fixed, but try not to do it on the backs of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Mayor and council, thank you for your time tonight. Just had a couple of quick questions. Andy, you said 23 months from when we could do another election for a tax, right, a special election on that? When's our next budget coming up? In five months? Is that right?
The next budget, council typically will hold the budget work sessions in late July, early August.
Okay.
Depending on when that schedule works for everybody to meet. And the budget hearings will take place in September.
Okay, so when would that budget then go into effect?
October 1.
October 1. Okay, so, seven months from now, we have the ability to budget for something that we have needed since 2017, because that's when the study came out, if I remember correctly, saying that citizens in Norfolk wanted police expansion, we needed road infrastructure, and then the parks and rec stuff on side of it. Is that correct? Am I correct on that?
As far as the priorities that.
Yeah, wasn't that study done in 2017?
Yeah, those have all been identified through a survey as important to the public. But what you're saying is seven months to the time the budget's approved and done.
Right, yeah, but the study was done in 2017 that identified some of these projects, right?
That particular survey was in 17, yes.
Okay, all right. So my question is then is, if our sales receipts are up and we continue to see up and everybody is high positive that they continue to be up, why can't we budget for it? I think, what was fiscal year to date, $360,000 we were up on tax receipts? Is that correct?
I don't have that number in front of me and it depends on what tax.
Next item on the agenda?
Oh, you're talking about sales tax.
Up 12 and a half percent.
Okay, so, $300,000, we'll say, I don't think there's a contractor or a bank out there that wouldn't take that on. Shane, you're a contractor yourself. If you had a guarantee that the city was going to make an X amount of payment every year, or a builder was, or an individual is going to make X amount of payment on a project every single year to you because it was budgeted to you, would you turn that project down?
Well, you're going to have to pay for the whole project. So, are you saying, are you suggesting bonding to make the payment with the three, send a bond against the 350? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, if we can collect that and earmark that.
I mean, I.
And say, put that, apply that to, or, I'm sorry, apply that towards the budget for that, have it earmarked in the budget for that. You know, and I understand those increases have to be spread across the board for other things because other stuff goes up. I completely understand that. But I just think if there's a way that we can earmark this to get it into the budget, to have it budgeted for, so everybody comes out on even playing field, I think it's great. What Donna said, as far as the 4% on top, you know, for a hotel, that's insane. We start running events out of town. We start running the people out of town that are going to come to town hopefully to pay for these things. The restaurant tax, I really struggle with that, or the occupation tax. I've been through it before. It's difficult when I have to take guest complaints, and I know this is a personal gripe, but I have to take guest complaints and they want to argue with me on why they're taxed on their bill is what it is. And then I've got to explain city code to them, you know, because we do have a lot of people from out of town that come to us. We are a bedroom community. There is a ton of people that come to our community that spend money, and I think that is an awesome thing to have. To put it on the backs of everybody else, so I don't think is fair. I think the best way to do it is to start earmarking, budgeting for it now. And if I'm off the books on something, I would be more than happy to be educated right now. But I don't think there's a way that we can do this cost-effectively if we don't budget for it. So, thank you.
Zach, how do you feel about an occupation tax limited to alcohol sales?
I'm not a big drinker myself either, but I don't necessarily think that's the route to go either because you do have people that that pigeonholes, for lack of better terminology. And if it's for the betterment of the community, I don't think that one group should be forced to pay for it. So.
Not to be a stickler, you have to state your name.
Oh, Zach Steiner, sorry.
I was helping Brianna out a little bit.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment?
Andy, when we have an increase like that in sales tax revenue, where does that money go? Or is that, is that increased budgeted? Are we forecasting that, to have that increase? And we already pre-spended, or?
We budget conservatively on the revenue side as well, Randy. I'm trying to remember, what do we typically budget for? Three, three and a half percent, something like that is what we typically budget for?
In our sales tax, if you're asking about that specifically.
Sales tax.
We budget the last 12 months of revenue. So, we look at the last 12 months of revenue we've got, and that's what we budget. And we're up about $358,000 from what we budgeted.
When we're extra like that, what do we, how do we decide how that's spent?
That money goes into fund balance and is part of your balance brought forward when you're considering the budget for the next fiscal year.
Anyone else wishing to comment? I think that's a good question, councilman. I think it's important to note too that there's a growth cycle when the community grows and it has, just boundary-wise and it has population-wise, it has housing-wise, that more of that budget is consumed by the services that are needed to accommodate that growth. So, those things are all interrelated. So, those things are all interrelated and tied together. Anyone else wishing to make comment before we close the session? Any other comments by councilor staff?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out and voicing your opinion and how you feel about how things should look moving forward. I think there's some merit in what everybody said, so just take it all in and figure out we're going to get this stuff to move forward. So, we have had some decent growth in the sales tax part of things over the last six to seven years. Been significant, obviously. Basically, what it's done is it's taken and increased our, what we would call our emergency funds. I mean, it's, and it's just going to be kind of what a community feels like is a safe number to have there in case there is a crisis. So, when I first got up here, I think, I think there was a million dollars in the emergency fund. That's the beginning balance of each fiscal. It was only a million and that's how they operated for a long time. At a certain time, I don't know, two, three years ago, maybe longer than that, probably six, seven years ago, it was greatly suggested that that emergency fund balance would increase just in case something in our community had happened. Like when we had, I think what triggered that would have been when the, kind of when that propane plant, when we had the propane issue at the plant, that kind of got everybody thinking, okay, maybe we need to start having a bigger emergency fund account. So, what that, with the sales tax, the way budgets figured, the budget usually runs, they're figuring about three, three and a half percent of growth on sales tax each year. Over the course of probably the last six years, that's been almost seven to seven and a half percent. And so, what that allowed to happen was it increased the beginning emergency fund balance from roughly over a million to probably closer to that eight million.
Our actual fund balance, yeah, was around eight million.
So, that eight million, that's the growth when you, whenever you talk about, oh, we've got this robust budget, that's the funding they're talking about. And then traditionally, each year, we're under certain guidelines where we have to, we haven't always done it, but usually it's a 2% to 3% increase on wages. So, our budget's primarily made up, almost 80% payroll. The rest of it's capital expenditures. And so, and then what is involved in the capital expenditures is then part of your emergency fund balance or beginning balance. So, I think it leads to a lot of good discussion. Do we take and, you know, tap into that to pay for some of these projects? And that's what I feel like people are coming forward and saying tonight. I mean, that's, maybe it's going to be a little of both, I don't know. Or maybe it's a wait and see and try to put some money away so it's not such a big impact in two years if we try to come back at this thing. So, I do think there's some good discussion we could have. We're fortunate to be in the situation we're in, obviously. Sales taxes, we could be a community that's not having, they're not seeing that sort of growth. It helps across the board for everybody. I know property taxes, I get what people are saying about your property taxes, it does, it feels like that is, and a lot of times, it's not a mill levy increase so much, but a assessment against your property that has increased. But I do understand when you're like, well, if the assessment went up, how come your budget spending hasn't gone down? That's a legitimate question to ask and I don't, I don't discourage that question being asked. So, I think there are some opportunities here for us to look at. I'm glad the citizens came up here and pointed some of that out because obviously it's on a lot of people's minds. So, moving forward, I would just ask to be conservative and look through the whole entire budget, what we can do and what can and can't be done. So, I just think we just have to have those good discussions. I think this was a, maybe, maybe there could have been more time in putting this out there for the public to know this was happening tonight. But I'm glad that everybody got a chance to speak spoke. So, anyway, I appreciate the time on this issue.
And just to follow up on Shane's comment too, I know that emergency fund, and I think it's recommended that cities carry about a 16% fund, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
And where are we according to that 16%?
We were at 16% and then this last year, we paid off some bonds that we were taking out, more bonds for this building, actually. We were taking out of the council priority money to free up that council priority money and I think we reduced that where we're now, like 14% to 15%. Or about a million under what the GFWA would recommend as budgeted fund balance.
So, it's, it's not like those funds are excessive by any means?
Not at all.
I think some of these numbers are instructive. We have a long agenda ahead of us, so I don't want to belabor the point, but I think it's important to outline just the parameters we're working with here. So, Randy, that beginning balance or essentially the emergency reserve, this fiscal year was eight, approximately $8 million, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that is what, you're saying that's at 14% to 15% of total budget, which is the recommended level of emergency reserve, according to government accounting experts?
Yes, the eight million is our actual fund balance. Our budgeted fund balance isn't that much because we budget conservatively. Our budgeted fund balance was 7.5 and then the ending fund balance was... Hang on just a second. Thought I had that right in front of me. Yeah, the ending fund balance we're budgeting is about four million.
Okay.
And that's that conservative budgeting where our revenues normally come in more than that.
Okay.
Ventures normally come in less than that.
Context, the price tag of these items that we're talking about tonight, police station expansion, 8.5 million, correct? That was, that was the number cited throughout the last year. I'm sure with cost inflation, that's changed a little bit, 8.5 million for police station expansion. Also, street repair, I think Steve Ramis, Steve Ramis, Public Works Director, can you tell us, just so we all have an idea of this, how much we typically spend on street repair and maintenance year to year right now?
Our annual budget and CHAF that goes into repair is, I think last year was 3.7 million. This year, this year probably be about 3.9 million.
And that's primarily from CHAF, which is a state program allotted via gas tax?
That's our city highway allocation funds in addition to some, some federal dollars, some STP dollars that the state purchases and then gives us more of a local state dollar for. There's some vehicle licensing fees in there as well. Might be some small amount of bridge funds that come in as a function of the annual bridge inspections that get done. That's all about right, right at that point. And then there's, obviously we have our street department and the work that they do on top of that.
And Steve, through the analysis and evaluation you've done of our current infrastructure through concrete assessments and things like that, you found that approximately there would need to be 1.5 million dollars extra to do the straight repairs that we need to do to get caught up on the backlog of projects that have been waiting for attention for decades in Norfolk right now. Is that correct?
Correct. About, you know, right at that million and a half a year in additional maintenance work, what I would call maintenance, mill and overlay specifically.
All right. I just want to read some of those numbers in the record so we can all recognize just the situation, the circumstances we're in right now. Before we close out on this input session, any other comments?
Mayor, I got, I got one comment to make, is that we talk about property evaluations and we sure seem to hear from, from public that our taxes are too high. On property taxes, we don't set the evaluation, but we're third in line to receive any, any property tax money. We're, the public schools are ahead of us, Madison County is ahead of us, and we're third in line. And we often hear that our taxes are too high and we're not the one who set the evaluation, but we're the ones third in place. So, I kind of, I kind of think maybe if you feel that your taxes are too high, going to the, going to the people that are in third place is probably not the first place I would go. So.
Fair point, councilman. We, we send out our annual report every year. At the end, at the conclusion, has the pie chart of where your property tax dollars go. And I think if you saw it this year, within the city of Norfolk, within the boundaries of Norfolk, the property tax asking that the city of Norfolk collects is, what, 14% to 15% of the entire property tax collected in Norfolk because of what you said, councilman. First in line is the schools, second county. Sure, briefly, Jim, please.
And I appreciate what, what Corey's talking about in regards to that, but I just wanted to clarify that the 126% tax increase on my home was just the city portion. It was not including the schools or the college or anybody else. That was just the city's portion. And in addition, in the last, I did an analysis, I think it was the last nine years, 10 years, 11 years, something like that, the schools had decreased their levy by 18% and the city had increased their levy by 32%. So, the school has been lowering their levy and the city has been increasing their levy. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Any other comments?
When we go to set the budget, what's that look like yearly? Is that city staff? Is that council? What's that committee look like? Can you speak to that, Andy?
So, our process will typically kick off where divisions will start in about May, June timeframe, putting together the budget requests. And so, we have different levels that the city has used. We have your level one, two, three, four, level one. And two, usually you might even see a negative because there's no growth is what you're anticipating, no new asks. And then if you have new requests, you might look at, can you fit into a level three, into a level four? I don't want to get into the details of that because it's a very complicated kind of formula that we use, but, but basically staff will present four different levels of a budget. And so, that will start and then the council will have your work sessions and then you'll get to review all department budgets. You'll get a comparison from last year to this year. And you can, it's as many questions as you'd want to ask on each particular budget. And all the divisions that show up, they present their items and it's, and it's a free for all for, for council to ask those questions for what you'd want to, want to have included in the budget.
Is that like a two week timeframe, a two month timeframe or?
We've done, since I've been here, I think it used to be maybe two or three evenings or, or two or three days. It just kind of depends on what works for people. This last year was a first where we knocked it all out in one day. I've heard, I heard good reviews from council members at least that that was a good way to do it. But really, that process is council driven. That can take as much time as you want it to take to review those budgets. I mean, that's, that's your opportunity as a council to go through those in as much detail with as much questions as you want. So, it's kind of varied, councilman, over, over how that's been done the last number of years.
Thank you.
And Steve, not again to put you on the spot, but we had this discussion the other day and I found it interesting. Cities like Carney and Grand Island, they, they receive a CHAF, for streets, receive a CHAF budget like we do. But you were telling me that both go over that CHAF budget by a certain amount year to year. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct. I believe Carney's is, I think they have a sales tax out there that supports their street needs to the tune of about three million a year and I believe Grand Island...
Over their CHAF budget, three million?
On top of their CHAF budget. I think Grand Island is at five, around five million.
Three and five. Recognizing those are larger communities, but they, they've instituted those mechanisms to put more on top of street repair than what they receive in CHAF through, through local option sales tax in both cases.
Do they do that on the budget? Do you think, I don't know, speculation probably?
That, that money, as we understand, is generated from a local option sales tax. Approved by voters. All right. Any other discussion on this council before we move ahead? All right. Thank you all for contributing to the discussion. This is just the first in a series that we will have to further gather input and try to formulate reasonable plans to move forward with these important projects. There is an online survey that you can go to. It was associated with the annual report that you received in the mail, but you can access that at the city website, which will allow you to give preference to what projects you feel are most important and the best ways to help fund them. All right. With that, we will move on to item number six. All that, and we're just on item number six. Recommended actions. I would look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, who?
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
We then look for a motion to approve the full agenda.
Second.
Motion second. If no discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Takes us to item number 20 under special presentations. It's a proclamation for dedicating March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month. The proclamation reads as such, "Whereas there are individuals and families in our community adversely affected by problem gambling and compulsive gambling is often hidden from family members, social services, and mental health professionals, it is important to raise awareness of the warning signs of compulsive gamblers and connect them with professional help. Now therefore, I, Josh Moni, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, by the power vested in me, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2023 as Problem Gambling Awareness Month and urge citizens to learn more about the consequences of problem gambling and help available through the Nebraska Gamblers Assistance Program." Is there anyone here to receive this proclamation tonight? Does not look like it. We will move on to item number 21 under public hearings and related action. We will combine, since they are the same subject matter, items 21 and 23, both public hearings to open at the same time. Public hearing at the request of Flat Rock Group LLC to consider zoning change from A Agricultural District to C3 Service Commercial District on property generally located west of North 40th Avenue and south of West Norfolk Avenue. And the public hearing to consider a request from Flat Rock Group LLC to consider zoning change from A to I1 Light Industrial District on property generally located west of North 40th Avenue and south of West Norfolk Avenue. And to kick off this public hearing, we'll hear from Val Grimes, our city planner, please.
Yes, thank you. Brianna, could you unblank the screens, please? Thank you. So, just a general idea of where this is at, I've kind of outlined it in blue here. So, Fountain Point is to the east and Stala Homes is on the west. And the larger section is the item number 23 public hearing going to I1 and the smaller one is going to C3. This is in the highway corridor overlay, so anything that comes in will need to go through that during the building permit timeframe. But being along the highway corridor like this, the comp plan does kind of call for that commercial, mixed commercial type zoning. And the applicants are here tonight if you have any questions for them. And also, just to let you know that if the zone changes, the two zone changes do not pass tonight, then we will have to pull the conditional use permit from Planning Commission tomorrow morning because the second meeting of Planning Commission will hear the, the second and vote on the conditional use permit for the CAT dealership to be at the very southwest corner of 40th and 275. If you choose not to pass these or pass them only on the first reading, then we will pull that and continue to move that forward. And on the 20th meeting of council, you should be hearing the plat come along. The plat just wasn't quite ready and we had already noticed the, the zone changes. But if you have any questions, and I can certainly pull up the CAT dealership, which is what we know of too, so you can kind of see what is part of the conditional use permit also.
Yeah, I do have a question on that though. So, if it's being changed to the... So if it's being changed to the C three and I one, why does CAT still need a conditional use permit?
It's the highway corridor overlay, those few things that needed a cop. Yep.
Okay, so it's a public hearing. I think since this is the first time this proposal's been before the council, we welcome the developers to come forward to talk a little bit about it with us.
My name is Rob Duval. I'm with Schimmer here on behalf of Flat Rock Group. Yeah, we're asking for the rezoning of lot one and lot two to I one. We do have that CAT dealership going in on lot one. Lot two is a project that's currently on hold due to budgetary reasons. Lot three, due to its location, we think that's a good spot for a C three zoning. And it's only two point four six acres or so. So we didn't think that was a good I one lot. Any other questions you might have? I'll try to answer them. And we would like to waive additional readings if there's no opposition.
So lots two and three are not necessarily related to the lot one CAT dealership. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is this future property going to be an expansion of what is already existing in town? Or what is, are we consolidating? Because there's lots of CAT caterpillar buildings around town, so.
They will move their location to this lot.
Okay.
Yeah, and so your ingress from that property primarily be on both Fortieth and Forty-third?
Okay.
So really, not going out on two seventy-five?
No.
Okay. Perfect. Thanks.
Any other questions? The, so the conditional use permit relative to the highway corridor district, you guys have worked through those plans with planning staff to meet those requirements?
We have.
Okay. And intend to continue forward with that plan?
Yeah, there.
Okay.
It's a nice looking building.
Any other questions, council? Thank you. So our public hearings, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so now.
Jim McKenzie, I just had a question on Fortieth Avenue. If I recall, when Fountain Point put that in, they didn't want to pay for the whole thing. So part of it was going to be assessed to the adjacent property owner and he didn't want it. And so I don't know who paid for the rest of that. Did the city pay for it? And if so, are we going to get that money back with this development?
That was an ag deferment.
Pardon?
That was on an ag deferment. I remember, it was the first time I heard of that when that came up. Matt Celine's had that property and they put on an ag deferment to pay for that road that went in. So anyway.
I think, Jim, probably what you're recalling is some conversation on a right turn lane at Fortieth?
No, it's actually Fortieth Street, Fortieth Avenue.
Yeah, Fortieth Street.
Correct.
Right. It would be the west side of Fountain Point.
Correct.
So there was some conversation there. Ultimately, the Department of Transportation came back and said that until such time as a traffic impact study or the department just determines that that lane is, that right turn lane is needed, it did not have to go in. There was a new traffic impact study done as a part of this subdivision. They are going to have, when they build Forty-third, and I don't know, Val, you want to, certainly, you want to bring up, you have their preliminary plat or anything? They are going to be building as a function of their subdivision. They will be building Forty-third off of two seventy-five south. And then they'll be extending that over to Fortieth. And that'll be Madison Avenue that runs east-west. So they're extending Madison Avenue from Fountain Point through here, here on the Upper Sen. What you're looking at here is their preliminary plat that shows the entirety of the acreage they own there. I think it's about a hundred and forty acres. What you see in front of you is rezoning for lots one, lot two, and lot three up there on the top. You can see Madison Avenue is offset about a hundred and fifty feet south of the Madison Avenue extension to the east. But they will be building their, they'll be extending Fortieth down to a little bit south there to connect into Madison. They'll be building out Madison. They'll be building Forty-third then back up to two seventy-five. The traffic impact study then that came in did look at two other impact studies that have been done here in the last couple of years. The Department of Transportation is going to require that a southbound, what we call offset right turn lane, be constructed as part of this subdivision. And so that will be going in at Forty-third. They're also going to be pushing down, there's a little loop there that connects over to Stala. The department requires, I can't remember the exact number, roughly a two hundred and twenty-five foot controlled access entry. So they have to move that approach to the south.
But I guess my question is, you know, did it cost seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build the existing Fortieth Street? And did Fountain Point pay half of that? And then did the city pay the other half?
We didn't, no, we didn't pay. I'd have to go back and look to be a hundred percent sure, Jim. But my recollection is Fountain Point paid for the whole thing.
I don't believe that's correct.
It was done with a TIF bond.
It was part of a TIF.
It was part of a TIF, yeah.
But I was under the impression on that TIF bonding, the actual assessment for Fountain or for Celine's property was put on an ag deferment. And then once that was zoned to commercial from ag-
That would be-
Or I, I one from ag, then the assessments would be, four Forty-third Street would then be at that time.
And I can look at that. And that, you mentioned that egg deferral and you're right, that was already one of the first egg deferrals here in a long time. So when we would have assessed that, typically, we would assess that west half of Fortieth over to them. That would have gone into egg deferral.
So will the city get those dollars back? I just don't want the taxpayers to be paying for that development, for that.
We don't, the dollars, yeah, the dollars, they just come back out of egg deferral then and would be, and would have to be paid as a function of the assessment.
So how does that work mechanically?
Once, once the zoning would change, then that would be the mechanism then to pull that assessment or make that assessment current and pull it out of egg deferral.
So then the city will get reimbursed for what we put into that street then?
Correct. Through that assessment.
Through the assessment.
Yeah. It'd be, I think we did, typically, we've been doing like twenty-year assessments on those.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Anyone else wishing to make comment? Okay. Hearing no one else, we'll close discussion and ask for Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held public hearings on February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three at the request of Flat Rock Group LLC to consider a zoning change from A agricultural district to C three service commercial district and A agricultural district to I one light industrial district on property generally located west of North Fortieth Avenue and south of West Norfolk Avenue. Planning Commission recommends approval of the request with seven to zero votes.
Okay. With that, we'll close the hearings and move to item twenty-two. Look for a motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-two approving a zoning change from A to C three on property generally located west of North Fortieth Avenue and south of West Norfolk Avenue.
I'll offer consideration ordinance fifty-eight twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion second. Any discussion, council?
Has the neighbors said anything? Are they all for it? There's no one else talking against this at all, Valerie?
We haven't gotten anybody saying anything against it either here or Planning Commission or really any phone calls on it.
Any further discussion? Hearing no short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-two carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I recommend we suspend the rules and pass ordinance fifty-eight twenty-two on second, third reading.
I'll second that.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second, third readings. If no discussion on that, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-two carries on second and third.
Item twenty-four, we look for motion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-three approving a zoning change from A to I one on property generally located west of North Fortieth Avenue and south of West Norfolk Avenue.
I'll offer consideration of fifty-eight twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Motion second. Any discussion on this council? And again, just for clarification, Val, I'm sorry. The reason why part of this is C three and part of it is I one is?
That was the applicant's choice to make the lot one and two the CAT dealership. And the project that they were talking about that got put on hold is I one. And then that farthest west one to C three.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing no short title, please.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-three carries on first reading.
And I will make a motion to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading. Second.
Okay. Motion to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. No further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-three carries on second and third.
Item twenty-five, we'll open this public hearing to consider requests from Park Mobile Home Court MHC LLC for a zoning change from C three service commercial district and RM mobile home district to I one light industrial district on property generally located at nine fifteen Bonita Drive. And to kick off the public hearing, we'll hear again from Val Grimes, please.
Thank you. If Brianna could unblank me again, please. Thank you. Just a general vicinity. This is all of Park Mobile Home that you see here. This is the former lagoon area that they do not need anymore and has been filled in correctly because they are on water and sewer now, cities. And we have had an ongoing violation with intermingled RV campers temporarily in with the actual RM mobile home. The previous owners that we were dealing with now sold to the new owners that are putting these processes through. And that person is here tonight too to talk about it. And this was the way to completely separate the temporary RV campground versus somebody's neighborhood of mobile homes. And why the I one zoning is because we have two zoning categories that can permit a campground with a conditional use permit. And that is ag and I one. And those are the only two that we have currently. And because it is a conditional use permit, they have already gone through Planning Commission public hearing for the conditional use permit that will follow this also. So just kind of similar to the last one, if this does not pass on all three readings for the zone change, then we will need to pull number twenty-seven, the plat that goes along with this. And then we will pull the conditional use permit at Planning Commission tomorrow so that they will not vote on that. And I can show you the zoning. And so this is the area that we're looking at rezoning. So they have I three, C three, I three, kind of in their general vicinity. And for the RM zoning, because that is really the only thing that they touch residentially, is their own. But we still would apply the buffer yards to that, just like we would anyone else. And if you don't have any other questions from me, that's kind of the general idea. The applicant would like to connect and kind of show, similar to what we are actually attaching to the conditional use permit, our site plans and three D maps so that we make sure that it will actually get built the way that they've been talking about.
Thank you, Val. Any questions? Again, this is a public hearing, so anyone wishing to make comment can do so. Once again, this is the first time this council has seen this proposal. So I'd welcome the developer to come to us and talk a little bit more about it.
Bringing in a lot of dirt, huh? Oh, I'm sorry. I had to make light of it before it started.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Schilling. I'm a partner with Saratoga Group. And I'd just like to take a few quick minutes to give you a little bit of background on who we are as we are a new owner of the property recently in the past couple of months here. And also provide some details and background on the project and then be available to answer any questions anybody may have. So the main thing you need to know about Saratoga Group is we are an owner-operator of RV communities and manufactured home communities around the U.S. We have over ninety of these communities that we own and we operate. And it's an important distinction. We have not sold a property to date. We buy these types of communities, we invest heavily in them, and then we continue to operate them. There is a tremendous amount of institutional experience and knowledge amongst the executive team in the company. We're based out of Knoxville, Tennessee. But we do have onsite management and regional managers in all areas that we own and operate. And La Bonita or Park MHC is no different than any of those communities. We currently have our own park manager onsite and staff onsite who currently run and maintain the park. Just a little background on the community itself. So it's been there for some time, since sometime in the sixties it was developed. It's operated as a manufactured home community at the beginning of its life. And then sometime in the nineties, there was evidence of RVs staying there. And that's been happening ever since. As Val alluded to, that was not an allowable use, which we ended up finding out after purchasing the property. And have now, are sitting in front of you guys here to try to rectify that issue by dividing out the property. It's very well located just south of downtown. It's right on the other side of where the park's at. There is an existing manufactured home community there that had eighty-eight sites in it. And again, that's intermixed with some RVs kind of in that community today. So the proposal sees us taking a vacant piece of land that's been remediated and is no longer used and turning it into a forty-seven-site RV community. I want to just call out a couple of like key pieces here as it relates to these, this layout and the RV sites. And I'm going to use the city's park as an example to compare it against just so kind of spatially people can kind of appreciate. just so kind of spatially people can kind of appreciate what that layout would may look like. So the setbacks in between or from side to side, from like where an RV would park to where the next RV would be, is twenty-eight feet roughly. This is a significant increase in distance between RVs over what the city currently sees, so around ten to fifteen feet. So the sites, the sites are much more spread out than kind of maybe what you would see in the area here. They're also quite a bit deeper. All of our pull-through sites are eighty feet long. All of the roads are paved in the community. All of the sites are concrete sites. Again, a bit of an upgrade from what you see at most RV parks in the area, and definitely an investment into the community, something we want to have and own and operate for a long time. We are planting over, or just about, excuse me, just about a hundred trees on the property. We did receive feedback, and I met with people in the area early on, prior to even submitting, to try to get some feedback from the community. You know, one of the things that we did receive was people wanted to see some sort of a buffer between what's around us and the community that we would be developing. We've achieved that, and I've said previously, we're trying to achieve the same thing. We want separation from that. This is a campground, and it should look and feel like a campground. So on the north side of the property, we have a four-foot wide berm that's four foot high. And I'm going to skip here to some pictures. This is looking down Bonita, and you can see the berm that's there. We have evergreen trees lining the entire front of the property with a fence. So with the fence and the raised buffer, that's ten feet in the air. The evergreens will plant and grow up to thirty feet tall. You can see the trees kind of throughout the community in there. So there's roughly fifty evergreen trees that we'll be planting, and then another fifty kind of insidious trees that are more local to the area throughout the community to create that campground-type feel that you would expect in a community like this. Again, just going to point out, all paved roads, all paved streets, lots of grass, campus-style layout with mature trees. There's two-car parking. Again, something unique that you don't see in all RV communities. So we have enough room and enough depth to park, you know, forty-five-foot longest RV you can possibly tow, plus a truck and another car, and have a picnic table. Everything's of commercial grade, again, meant to be around for a very long time. I can be available for any questions anybody may have regarding the project, but that's the information I wanted to share with everybody.
I do have a question. Will there be any type of, like an HOA be set up for this area?
Yeah, good question. So there is a, we've met with planning staff and have talked kind of extensively about this, but in most communities, you see a rules and regulation. And so inside of our MH community, which will still exist and is there today, there are a set of rules and regulations for those homeowners that they, homeowners that they have to follow. Things like keeping a site tidy, not having playgrounds on them, having certain type of level of siding and skirting and cleanliness-type standards. In an RV park, we have terms of service. An RV park is not a place where you reside and live at. It's a place that you visit, and therefore there's a term of service while visiting there that people have to follow. In either situation, the onsite property manager, who helps us run the park there onsite and forces those rules and regulations, or those terms of service, and that's how they are managed.
Speaking of terms of service, what is the, what is the longest term of service you can have?
So we have stays anywhere from just a night, and it could be somebody who comes in town for six months or eight months. A lot of times, we see the longer stays. People like nurses or contract workers in the area, they'll be coming in, possibly doing a project or working in the hospital systems. We don't have a maximum length of stay for those people. How we regulate that is two, well, really three, three different ways. Inside of the terms of service, there are specific rules, kind of regulations, you would say, in there that allow us to manage the campground and make sure that the sites maintain that level of, you know, look, quality, and feel. We don't allow people to put up tarps, hay bales, no sheds, none of that kind of stuff. All of the RVs that come into the campground have to be fifteen years or newer. We don't allow anything aged past fifteen years to come into the campground. We do that because, again, we're trying to maintain a certain quality level of camper and look to the community. And a lot of times, your older RVs, they can create problems within the community with leaks and things like that. We also have an application process for anybody who comes in over thirty days, and in that application process, there's a background check that takes place as well. It'd be something similar that you would see trying to apply to live in an apartment. And that's how we regulate the type of community we are.
I have a final, third question, it's probably more for Val. Don't we have a requirement that an RV must be moved within a year's time?
You're probably thinking that six-month, one-hundred-and-eighty-days for off-road ranch, and that was because they were in the floodplain. And so if you're in the floodplain, if something's there over one-hundred-and-eighty days, that becomes permanent.
So we don't have to worry about that in this?
Right. They don't have any floodplain.
Okay.
Yep.
You mentioned removing playgrounds, but you're also going to build a community playground, is that correct?
It is. So the playgrounds we don't allow are things that you would find in, you know, maybe somebody's front yard. It's really a safety issue, but within our plan to redevelop or improve upon the existing MH community, we're bringing in ten brand-new homes this year. We're putting in a community playground. We're also doing some fencing. We're knocking down a handful of older buildings and removing some older units that are in there over the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Do you have any provisions for additional equipment, like ATV sitting, big items sitting out in front of the, in front of the RV?
Yeah, we don't allow any of that kind of stuff. So you can't have any four-wheeled vehicles that aren't a car on your site. It's, it's not off-road ranch kind of a place. There's, there's nowhere to drive that.
On the permanent residence area, what is the, it's a land lease, and do you know what that number is going to be per lot?
Yeah, so Andrew, right now, the existing rates inside the community are like a three-eighty-five a month. And as we bring in new homes, the people who come into the community will be somewhere in the mid-four-hundred range for that.
Thanks.
When do you suspect this will all be done, as far as with the RV park? When will be usable?
So our intention would be if, if this gets approved, we would move directly into engineering and permitting, and hopefully be underway with construction sometime at the end of April. And it's roughly a six-month project for us.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Appreciate you, appreciate the investment in Norfolk and you taking into consideration the screening concerns and landscaping concerns that you heard and being proactive about that. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Since it's a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment can do so now. Okay. Seeing and hearing note one, we'll close the discussion and ask for a Planning Commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February seventh, two thousand twenty-three, at the request of Park Mobile Home Court, MHC LLC, to consider zoning change from C-3 Service Commercial District and RM Mobile Home District to I-1 Light Industrial District on property generally located at nine fifteen Bonita Drive. The item was tabled until the February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three Planning Commission meeting, at which time the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request with a seven-to-zero vote.
With that, please vote.
Your Honor, I'll be abstaining from ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-four.
Okay. With that, please vote. Oh, I'm sorry. We were just on the hearing, weren't we? Okay, my fault. I mean, you closed the hearing and moved to item number twenty-six, the promotion to consider ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-four approving a zoning change from C-3 and RM to I-1 on property generally located at nine fifteen Bonita Drive. Motion second, any further discussion on this, counsel?
Not sure they have a discussion. I thought it was a good explanation of what was going on there. It was, I think, a lot of questions. I appreciate the presentation, it was good.
Yeah, and I'll make one additional comment, and that is it needed to be separated, the RV from the mobile home park. So I do applaud the developer for doing that. It needed to be done, and it needed to be done for a few years.
Got it. There's a kind of confusing mix of zoning designations there. Committable work by the developer and staff to get, come to a solution. Any other discussion, comments, counsel? And Councilman Claussen will be abstaining, correct? Okay. With that, you've already read short title?
Have not.
Have not, short title, go.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Alright, with that, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Grand Quest, Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Muir, Snorton, Hildebrand abstaining from the vote. Claussen, ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-four carries on first reading.
I'll make a motion that we would suspend the rules and waive this on the second and third readings.
Second.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Grand Quest, Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Muir, Snorton, Hildebrand abstaining. Claussen, ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-four carries on second and third.
Okay, item twenty-seven, we look for a motion to consider resolution number twenty-two-three dash fourteen, approving the final plat of La Bonita RV Park addition.
I'll make an offer of consideration. Resolution number twenty-two-three dash fourteen. Again, I'll be abstaining from resolution twenty-two-three.
Motion second.
Second.
Claussen abstaining. Anything to add here, Val?
No, this is just the plat that follows what we just discussed with the zone change.
Okay, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, please vote.
Voting in favor. Grand Quest, Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Muir, Snorton, Hildebrand abstaining. Claussen, resolution twenty-two-three dash fourteen is adopted.
Alright, that takes us to item twenty-eight. We'll open this public hearing to consider an amendment to section four dash four of the official city code to include an exception for the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks with a valid permit, and to more clearly define livestock as it relates to the keeping of livestock within the city, to amend section four dash six of the code to address at-large chickens or ducks, to enact section twenty-seven dash two-nine-five of the city code to allow the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks in residential districts with a valid permit. And to kick off the hearing, give us some more background on this, we'll hear once again from Val Grams.
Alright, thank you. So this has kind of come and gone over the years, and so we have gotten to this point where we do have a proposed ordinance for keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks within the city limits. And so this proposed ordinance is an amendment to city code section four dash four, which is more into the police range to allow the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks inside city limits with the valid permit. And then along with that, there's also an amendment to section four dash six regarding the chicken and ducks running at large. The proposed ordinance also contemplates the addition of section twenty-seven dash two-ninety-five, which is the zoning code, to allow the hens, bantam hens, or ducks in residential zoning districts. So that is not only inside city limits, but outside city limits. So, because we do have R-ones and such outside city limits at times. And so this would actually limit the allowance of the chickens to properties consisting of a detached, single-family dwelling and only when a permit is obtained. And all permits will expire on December thirty-first of each year so that it's responsibility of the permit owner to obtain that new permit if they wish to continue having the chickens or ducks. That makes it an easy date for everybody to keep track of. And as was suggested at a subcommittee, as part of the permit application, the applicant will be required to obtain approval from seventy-five percent of the neighboring properties per the description in the code, and there's text description and graphics also in there for people to look at, and also the immediate adjacent neighbors. If the immediate adjacent neighbors are not in favor of this, then the permit will be denied. Otherwise, it's the seventy-five percent. And the proposed ordinance also establishes requirements for minimum square footage for the coop and the run per chicken, minimum distance from the main structure and any neighboring residential structures, so not necessarily neighbors' garages or anything, as well as other language such as sanitation, crowing, and slaughtering. And just to let you know, just like the other ones, if this does not pass on at least the first reading, then number thirty is the fee schedule that goes along with it, and so that would need to be pulled if this does not pass.
Okay. Thank you, Val. So this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment on this item can do so now. Good evening.
Hello, I'm Mariah Perrigan. I want to start just by thanking you for the job you do. I know it's hard and probably thankless. So, I am in favor of ordinance five-eight-two-five. Allowing chickens to be kept in Norfolk city limits is a very good idea and a very Nebraskan thing to do. Raising chickens is a direct, positive response to supply-demand concerns with many far-reaching benefits. It is wise for a community to produce some of its own fresh wholesome food, and we've seen that with farmers markets and the like. Fruits and vegetables are wonderful, but a stable supply of protein in the form of homegrown eggs is an additional benefit. Nebraska solves problems and is a model for our nation. That begins with how we live here at home. We want to live Nebraska strong. We want to teach our kids the same. If the ordinance to allow chickens in Norfolk city limits passes, then families living in town will be able to raise their families with some of the real hands-on work ethic that defines our state. Caring for chickens is a special opportunity with some deep ties to our past. Real work transforms kids. Consider this example. Currently, we are composting with my grandchildren. My little three-year-old, almost four-year-old, is a very serious worm rancher. In fact, there is not a day that goes by that he doesn't come over and say, "We need to take care of the worms." And he goes down, feeds the worms, he makes sure that they have air and their moisture content is correct. And I can tell you for sure, I cannot crack an egg or scrape a plate without that boy telling me, "Gamma, that goes in the worm bucket." And that's just a serious sense of responsibility for a little life to have all that from a bucket of worms. It is an amazing opportunity. He's a budding conservationist at three, almost four years old, all for a bucket of worms. Look, if I'm allowed to have chickens, that kid will end up becoming president. Okay? So, there are a lot of heavy issues here tonight. And you have an opportunity to settle a happy issue. You have an opportunity to make a lot of people smile. You get to lighten a load with this vote. And you get to empower the families of Norfolk to respond to uncertain times with positive action. And that's a good thing. In fact, it's the Nebraska thing to do. So, thank you for hearing me. And I don't know what's appropriate, I haven't done this before. Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Mariah, for being here. We appreciate that input. I have one question. So you heard Val talk about some of the requirements and the requirements and the restrictions involved with being able to keep chickens, and you have to have a valid permit. Do, in your opinion, do all of those seem manageable and doable for those who really want the, want to have the privilege of doing this?
Well, and I'll be leaving with you a letter from my neighbors saying that they are excited about chickens, but not owning them. And I think that that might describe a lot of Nebraskans. I'm sorry, Norfolkians is what I meant to say. I think maybe something that's important is just recognizing the strength of our community. I think that came to the forefront during the time that we had the floods. We just, we do what needs to be done. And we're just an amazing community. And I think that giving people more freedom to make choices, to, you know, do something like produce eggs. You had spoken of an emergency fund. I feel like a chicken is a good emergency fund. It's just a positive response to some things that I think weigh on people's hearts. Giving people those opportunities doesn't mean that you are forcing people to have chickens. It means that you're enabling people to have chickens. And that, I think, is what this particular ordinance can provide. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Did you sign the form in front of you? Can we have you, oh, you did, okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment on this matter? Good evening.
Hello, everybody. I am Dr. T. Bush, and I teach at Norfolk, or Northeast Community College, I'm sorry. And I have been working a lot with the Urban Ag Program, trying to get it up and off the ground. We have an urban farm that we're developing, about 10 acres over by the regional center. And I do want to say I support this ordinance because chickens are a vital part of the urban ag movement. We've seen a lot of supply chain issues in the last three years, and we know that that can break in an instant. We're seeing a lot of just volatility in the food market right now. And eggs are something we're noticing currently. You all know that. They're still $8 for a dozen in some places. But I do think this, this comes back to the ag literacy issue that was just shared. We have a whole generation of students, I would say more than one generation, that don't understand where their food comes from. I was lucky enough to grow up around chickens and to have them on our ranch in Western Nebraska. But as I have horticulture and urban ag students come to me, they, they can't describe what it takes to grow their own food. And I think this is a really important thing for you guys to consider because we need these, these urban youth. And I, Norfolk's not an urban center by any means, but people who live in town need to be able to identify where their food comes from. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Bush, for being here. One question. And I don't mean to belabor this, but do you find value in some of the programs and the courses you're teaching? Would this potentially provide value, valuable assistance to what you're already doing at Northeast?
Yeah, I do think so. We do see a lot of students wanting to get into agriculture that don't come from a farming or ranching background. They do have these, these more urban spaces, maybe less than five acres, and they need to be able to, to practice. I'm going to call it a permaculture approach, but not just to grow their own fruits and vegetables, but to grow their own meat. And small-scale meat farming, which might mean chickens in this case, is, is vital to those opportunities.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anyone else wishing to make comment? Good evening.
Okay, so I think having chickens and ducks.
I think I know your name already, but can you tell the rest of us?
Isabel Finch.
Okay, thank you, Isabel.
I believe that it is, it is a very good idea to have birds like chickens and ducks because you can get eggs from them, and that can help instead of buying them. And it's a better idea to save money. And it can be easier for other people to do that instead. And I don't really see what could go wrong with having ducks and chickens because I guess sometimes they're loud. But you, you can always solve those problems by making, by getting permission. So there's no problem that we can't solve with having ducks and chickens. And they help out a lot, too. Because like some other people say, some, some children don't know where they get their food from, so that can help new people learn. And it's, it does save money with eggs. I think I'm finished.
You did a very nice job, a very compelling argument. And is it Isabel or Isabella?
It's just Isabel.
Isabel.
Any questions for me, Val?
Cut, cut to the point there. Do we have any questions for Isabel? Can you tell us how old you are?
Um, I'm 11 and a half.
And, and what grade are you in? What school do you go to?
Um, fifth grade, and I go to St. Paul's.
You go to St. Paul's, okay, very good. And did you start writing me letters about this issue a while back? Yeah, yeah, and you're pretty persistent, aren't you? That's good, you did a great job.
Thank you.
If, if this passed, would you intend to have one duck and some chickens? Or what's your plan?
We'll probably have two ducks.
Two ducks.
Probably not chickens, though, I don't know.
Not chickens, okay, all right.
Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Isabel. Very well done. Anyone else want to try to top that?
Better yet, vote against it.
That's what I'm getting to next. Any, it's a public hearing, anyone else wishing to make comment? Okay. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll ask for a planning commission report, please.
The Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 22nd, 2023, to consider approval of an amendment to Section 4-4 of the official city code to include an exception for the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks with a valid permit and to more clearly define livestock as it relates to the keeping of livestock within the city, to amend Section 4-6 of the code to address at-large chickens or ducks, to enact Section 27-295 of the city code to allow the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks in residential districts with a valid permit. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the amendment with a seven to zero vote.
Okay, with that, we'll close the hearing and move to item number 29. I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5825, approving an amendment to Section 4-4 of the official city code to include an exception for the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks with a valid permit and more clearly define livestock as it relates to the keeping of livestock within the city, to amend Section 4-6 of the code to address at-large chickens or ducks, to enact Section 27-295 of the city code to allow the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks in residential districts with a valid permit.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number 5825.
Second.
Hey, motion is second. Any further, just any discussion on this, council?
I got, I got a couple. Bird flu, what happens if there's bird flu anywhere near what we've seen?
I'm not sure that there's a resident public health expert to address that. My understanding is bird flu is most common within larger consolidated facilities, concentrated facilities of a lot of birds in one particular place.
They would have to do trace testing and see how wildly affected it is, and those flocks would need to be destroyed if the, if the infected flocks are, are a large number. But overall, the flocks would need to be tested in surrounding areas and the flocks destroyed.
Is...
We should ask Justin.
Is this, yes, we have a food, food safety expert, actually, on, on council. How common is it to see that, a disease like that take place in isolated, small numbers of animals?
It's typically not common. As you, excuse me, as you mentioned, that it would be more prevalent amongst larger, larger flocks because they would have the incoming of new, new flocks, new birds in that, in that area with that changeover. With the small, with the small community of population, you wouldn't see that rapid change, that rapid change to bring in new hens or new birds.
Sure, makes sense, thank you.
I got one more. At-large birds, I guess, that would get out. What, what's the... What happens if some get out and are somehow caught? I don't think I necessarily understand it, I'm sorry.
You just want to watch police go and chase a chicken, don't you?
I don't want to watch police chase it. They have plenty of things on their plate, that's why I'm asking this question.
So we don't have farmers set up right now. But what we have in code that says if any chickens or ducks run at large on any public ways or on the property of another, they may be apprehended by animal control officer or other city official and delivered to an individual who, one, owns land where chickens or ducks are permitted to be kept and, two, has an agreement with the city to accept the at-large chickens for ownership. And then upon delivery of the chicken or ducks by the official to the individual, to the person who has the agreement, the chickens or ducks shall immediately become the property of that person accepting the delivery. So we're not necessarily going to try to find the person that they belong to. Now, if it's the only place that has chickens in how many block radius, I mean, we'll try to be nice and say, hey, we caught a chicken, knock on your door, you know, before we give it away, I would think.
I've never tried to catch a chicken, but I don't think I'm going to. Ducks maybe are easier, I don't know. Think I'd get packed either way.
Speaking of giving it away, where does that chicken go when it's found?
Well, that's where we would have to get some list of farmers that, you know, are out in the country and ag zoned that can accept chickens that would have that agreement with us, that we would be able to actually drop them off.
Do we have any validation for those signatures of those 75%? How are we going to vet that to make sure that the neighbors are approving the use of, if their other neighbors are having flocks of chickens?
Probably the best that I can do is we would get those names off of county GIS to see who those owners are actually supposed to be, and I would compare that. But an actual signature? I mean, I, I don't have anything like a voting, you know, that will show somebody's signature. So at some point, it's going to be, we got to trust, I think.
So just to be, to be clear on this, 75% of the surrounding neighbors, but the next-door neighbors, it has to be 100% compliant?
Correct, yep. If your property line touches the applicant's property line, then they need to be all in approval.
You could create some contentious neighbors in this situation, I would think.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming then the compliance is complaint-driven?
I would think so, just like most of our other things, yeah.
So in subcommittee, when Josh was telling me this was going to be in the subcommittee, I was initially against it. And so I did my homework on it, and I called a fa, local family I know that had chickens. And hey, what's your, what's your thoughts on this? And he's like, oh, we've had them for 40 years, no problem, we should, Norfolk should allow this. And then he said, hell, call Sioux City, Iowa, they, they allow them. So the first, first department I called was the police department because I want to know what, how much resources has it taken, you know, with this ordinance to take care of the chickens. And, and the police department said, well, this is far from our biggest issue. And then I called the planning commission, and they kind of gave me the outline of the 75. I think there's this 85% actually. And so that's kind of where we got those numbers of getting the neighbor's approval. But they had no issues with it, so it kind of turned me to think, you know, to, if you're going to have chickens, you're, you're going to go through a process to, to get these chickens. So it's just not a buy a chicken and put it in your yard. You got to get some approval and proper housing and all that, so... That's kind of where the guidelines came up from, from Sioux City.
I think that's a good point, councilman. There's, if, if you want to do this, you're going to have to jump through some hoops to do it. There's, there's quite a few requirements and restrictions in, in how they can be kept. I will note, Val, I think as you did your research on this, you found several communities that allow for keeping of chickens and ducks within city boundaries. Some of those cities are much larger than ours, Lincoln and Omaha, Hastings. The, the model ordinance here was partly based on, because the councilman's helped Sioux Cities, but there were other ordinances that we considered in Nebraska, correct?
Yeah, the, the main one that I set up was a combination between Lincoln, Nebraska City, and Hastings. And the only thing from Sioux City we took was the, the neighbor approval, yeah.
In a, in a municipal setting, how do, what's the proper way to dispose of waste from chickens?
Don't know.
Okay.
It's pretty good fertilizer, as I understand it.
Fertilizer.
Any other questions or discussion, council? Okay. Not that I'd get a vote unless you all split on this, but I do appreciate the time that everyone who came to talk about this put in tonight. And I think some good points were raised. Specifically, these are the kinds of things that I think give people more freedom, more license on their properties within responsible confines of doing it in an orderly way. Educational value for kids, I think is undeniable from somebody growing up on a farm. Ag literacy, which we have seen has decreased more and more, even in a rural area like ours over the years. And price of eggs right now is not cheap. So if this can help some Norfolk families, I think it's a good idea. Any other discussion? More comments, council? Before we vote. Hearing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 4-4 of the official city code to include an exception for the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks with a valid permit and to more clearly define livestock as it relates to the keeping of livestock within the city, to amend Section 4-6 of the code to address at-large chickens or ducks, to enact Section 27-295 of the city code to allow the keeping of hens, bantam hens, or ducks in residential districts with a valid permit, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Claussen, voting in opposition. Granquist, Arns, Hildebrand. Ordinance number 5825 carries on first reading. It can only carry on first reading.
Can only carry on first reading, okay. All right, so then we will not take up item 30, correct? At this point.
Well, we can still pass that one on. If it's passed on first reading, that would...
On first reading, okay, okay. So item 30, we look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5826, approving an amendment to Section 2-5 of the official city code to include a permit fee for keeping hens, bantam hens, and/or ducks in the city. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for ordinance number 5826.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on this, council? Okay, hearing nine, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend Section 2-5 of the official city code to include a permit fee for keeping of hens, bantam hens, and/or ducks in the city, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in the affirmative. Arns, Webb, McCarthy, Muren, Snorton, Claussen, voting in opposition. Granquist and Hildebrand. Ordinance number 5826 carries on first reading.
All right. And now we move to our regular agenda. Item 31, I would look for a motion to consider ordinance number 5821 to enact Chapter 24, Article 12 of the official city code to allow the operation of golf cart vehicles... to allow the operation of golf cart vehicles on city streets and setting forth the provisions under which golf cart vehicles may be operated. As a note, ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-one passed on first reading at the February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three city council meeting.
I'll make a motion for consideration of ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-one. Second.
Motion second, and for some background on this, uh, Andy? Danny? Andy? Someone?
Yep.
Refresh our memories.
No, no problem, thank you, mayor. Well, this is obviously the second reading of this ordinance, I guess, at this point. Um, you know, we can take any questions from you. Uh, this would allow golf carts to be on city streets with some restrictions, uh, such as not being allowed on city highways, and there are some speed limit restrictions that, um, we're allowed to have as well. I know at the last meeting, uh, chief came up and we discussed some of the differences. Uh, we discussed some UTVs and, and some differences and things like that. So, we can certainly answer some of those questions again and revisit that discussion with council. Um, otherwise, we'd be happy to take any questions from you.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Any discussion, council? Any public input?
Did we just follow the state statute on this?
I believe so, Danny. We just followed what state law would require us to have. And I know there's been some, um, questions about insurance and things like that, too. And we're, we're following what Nebraska law provides, councilman.
Mayor and council, to, to clarify on that, the, the ordinance is a combination of what's required in state law as well as some additional things that we, uh, put into that. Uh, mirroring very close to what we did for the UTVs. Um, state law requires they can only go twenty miles an hour, they have to have a, a class of drivers license, they have to have insurance. We added, uh, some things into there that match the, uh, um, UTV ordinance. Because they have to have a class of drivers license, we have a specific age of eighteen, they have to obey the traffic laws. Uh, headlights, taillights, uh, some other equipment requirements. And so, the, if you looked at what we've done with UTV successfully, this is very close to that. There are a few differences because the laws are different for the golf carts. But it's based on both the requirements of state statute and, uh, guidelines that we found successful for the UTVs. Did I answer the question?
We're still allowing them to cross state highways, though, correct?
By statute, they can cross, they can operate on state highways, but they can cross them directly at a ninety-degree angle.
Would there be designated areas they can cross the state highway? Or would it be just at any intersection that would be allowable?
Based on what the law is right now.
But state statute says not, or they are prohibited on any road over twenty-five mile an hour of posted speed limit?
State law says thirty-five, we made the ordinance twenty-five.
Okay.
Uh, trying to keep them in neighborhoods compared to major streets.
Okay.
So, you're twenty, you're twenty-five miles an hour? Because, I mean, I'm just looking at, at state statute sixty-five oh one, and they're talking about, uh, twenty miles per hour.
The speed limit, not operation.
Okay.
By definition of a golf cart, they cannot be designed or operate more than twenty miles an hour or more. Our ordinance says they can operate on streets that have a speed limit of twenty-five or less.
Okay, perfect. Or? Or more? Or more.
I'm sorry. Or more or less.
Cannot travel on a street.
Or more.
It has to be twenty-five, if it's a twenty-five mile an hour zone, which is residential streets. They can operate on residential streets. If it's a street that's set thirty or thirty-five, they cannot operate on those streets. They can cross them, but they can't operate on them. Thank you.
I'll just bring up my reservations I had in subcommittee, again, I'll just echo it. When I think of the, when I think of Thirteenth Street, we have a pedestrian crossing there with a light, you know, just north of Elm Street. Because we just think that's the safest way for pedestrians to cross at Thirteenth Street in the middle of that four lane. When I think of a golf cart coming in contact or a semi having to dodge a golf cart at Highway eighty-one in Sheridan, it's just kind of a scary thought. When I think of the neighborhood by MPPD over there, coming out of there on two seventy-five and crossing that highway to, to dodge a semi, that's just a scary thought for me. I'm for golf carts, but I think we need to kind of take the extra step to ensure that we keep them out of the traffic of a semi. And so, that's kind of where I still stand on it. I'm for it, but not the way it is right now.
Is that, uh, is that something you'd like to bring in the form of a, of an amendment to the ordinance, councilman?
If I knew how this worked, I would do that.
You, you are certainly free to do that, offer an amendment to the underlying, uh, ordinance in that regard.
If I may, there was some discussion about having, uh, only allowing them to cross at traffic signaled intersections.
Right, yeah.
That's not what that.
At cross markings, yeah, right.
Um, but it's the traffic, you know, let's say, six, intersection, not just a stop sign.
Yeah.
You can designate, you know, the, we've got, we know where the traffic lights are. Uh, that would give them a green light to get across that roadway.
Yeah.
Chief, do you think that improves this ordinance?
I think it does. And, I mean, in all honesty, as a police department, we have some public safety concerns. So, anything that we would do with this to improve the safety possibilities, I would be all for.
You, you think like on a motorcycle, a lot of people, um, and we compare these to pedestrians and motorcycles, saying those are, are dangerous also. But a lot of people choose not to take their loved ones on the motorcycle with them. With a golf cart, it becomes kind of a family activity where load up the kids, go on the golf cart and, you know, go get a loaf of bread or go down to McDonald's or, and so, I just feel better protecting those families from not being in contact with a fifty mile an hour running semi.
For example, Col- Columbus specifically listed a multitude of intersections, because Columbus is the only similar city that has this. They just instituted it, so haven't had it long enough to, to see the effectiveness of it. But they list, um, the intersections they can cross at. I don't know that that's necessary, because some peo- people aren't going to have that list with them. If we just said one that's controlled by a traffic light, that would make it a little bit easier for people to understand and follow.
I think it may already be taken, uh, into account here, so Danny, go ahead and read that portion of it.
So, as it stands right now, uh, twenty-four dash three seventy-six reads, "A golf cart vehicle shall not be operated on any state highway and the crossing of any state highway shall only be permitted if," uh, and there's six different, um, subsections separated by an and, so they all must be in place in order for the, the crossing to take place. And subsection two says, "The crossing is made at an intersection controlled by a lighted traffic control signal." So, I guess my question would be, are we talking about something in, in addition to that? Because that, that anticipates, um, that, that's an, obviously not for anything above twenty-five miles per hour, but that is when, if we're talking strictly about our concerns, uh, when crossing state highway.
Which, which one was that, Danny?
Uh, twenty-four dash three seventy-six. Subsection two.
Okay. I missed that, that was something that must have been added, because I don't believe that was.
And to be, to be fair to, to Chief Miller, we have had a lot of conversations pertaining to UTVs, ATVs, the crossings, and so, it's probably just something that you, you forgot was in here.
That, that takes care of it as being the, the, the lighted control device, yes.
So.
So, it's, it's already, if that's, if that's the way the ordinance is written, that's, covers that.
And do we feel that that's, that's sufficient, or are we talking about additional, um?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it needs additional, if that's what the concern is, is the intersections, just making sure that it's a lit traffic light.
So, they have to go to a green red, you have to go to a green, you have to have a green light to go, it's, it's not a.
Correct.
But I think also that the speed limit part of it plays into it, what you're talking about, because they're not authorized on a thirty-five mile an hour street. So, how are you going to get across the highway that goes, like you're talking about from Sheridan down? I think across from Sheridan, it's thirty miles an hour, and I, where it zigzags.
Yeah, Sher- Sheridan would be, well, and there's no lit traffic signal there either.
So, can't cross there anyway, legally.
There's a lot of them, I don't know.
Correct. But I, I see what you're saying, Justin, is with the speed limit limitations that we have in it, where you can only be on twenty-five mile an hour streets or less, that's going to make it difficult to cross, you can't cross down, I don't think. You'd have to be really good, I don't think you could do it.
It'd be difficult. And I believe that was the original intent, is to have them for neighborhoods.
Neighborhood areas.
Not for community transportation.
Correct.
I think, I think we've addressed everything, because if I'm on a golf cart, for one, I'm more visible on a golf cart than I'm just walking as a pedestrian. Two, I could go twenty miles an hour across that intersection on my golf cart, which is a lot faster than I can walk across it. So, just practically speaking, I think the state statute has got everything it needs in it to move forward to our recommendation.
The what? I, I missed that for, through the, the various versions. Thanks, Danny.
All right, any other questions for Chief, while he's here?
Does that stat, does that have time of use, that they can be allowed to be used on the street?
Good question.
Big time, sunrise to sunset, and that's statutory.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, chief. Any other discussion, council? Any public input?
Luke Cruz, I'll just be super quick here. Um, I didn't see the ordinance, but if you guys decide to do more of the safety, like with flights, the ones that don't have it, or seatbelts, I did find a local company that is willing to do that. And I did find kind of, uh, what Justin was talking about. So, in the Columbus, uh, Telegram, I believe is the name of their paper, uh, their fourth ward council member, John Lorr, uh, there were some concerns about crossing, uh, but he's a bicyclist, um, and he said that, um, if you're going to allow bicycles, basically golf carts have a, a higher standard of safety. And I, I bicycle in, in Norfolk and run, and I would say I feel safer on a golf cart than riding a bike, so.
Worried about the kid?
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, if these families are going to.
Sometimes with the bikes, have kids, I guess I see two, where they pull it behind them.
Well, absolutely, but in general, when you're riding a bike, you're riding the bike.
Good concern. Safety's number one, but that's all I had. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Luke. Anyone else wish to make public comment? Okay, hearing nine, any further discussion, council? If not, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to enact chapter twenty-four, article twelve of the official city code to allow the operation of golf cart vehicles on city streets and highways and setting forth the provisions under which golf cart vehicles may be operated, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
Voting in favor. Granquist, Arnz, Webb, McCarthy, Nuren, Clausen, Hildebrand. Voting in opposition. Snorton, ordinance number fifty-eight twenty-one carries on second reading.
Okay, uh, item thirty-two would look for a motion to consider approval of, of an agreement with Central Square Technologies LLC to upgrade the computer-aided dispatch records management system at the Norfolk Police Division.
I'll make a motion for consideration of approval.
No, second. The motion is second. Uh, for some background on this, Chief Miller, please.
Mayor and council, the, uh, computer-aided dispatch and the records management system at the police division that we currently have was installed in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, we've looked at trying to upgrade it for a number of years, and I'm going to guess and say that it's been our, in our CIP for eight-plus years, trying to, trying to get it to, to get it upgraded. Through various processes, we have currently had it in the, in the CIP for upgrades, starting October one, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year. As I was looking at various products and capabilities, um, we currently have a system that is owned by Central Square. So, we are looking at upgrading our existing system compared to changing our system. I looked at a couple of other possibilities, and for a variety of reasons, I wasn't happy with the other capabilities. Uh, this one was able to serve our needs very effectively, in addition to being significantly cheaper than we originally anticipated. Uh, and we talked about CAD and RMS being computer-aided dispatch and records management system. But this system also is a total database system for the police department to include our jail system, our mobile computers, our, uh, administrative record-keeping, our training documentation. It's ju- it's a full suite of, 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 of products. Uh, in addition to looking at the product, um, I have talked to various agencies in the mid, around Nebraska specifically, to, who have used this product. And I've gone down to an agency and we looked at it live. I mean, we've had demos, but we wanted to see what it really looked like. So, we went through and have, uh, looked at the agreement, we've had our legal look at the agreement. I've met with our IT people to determine what our IT needs are going to be, and everybody has agreed that this is a good move. Uh, as far as paying for it, we originally anticipated, uh, we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in our CIP. That was a guestimate based on years ago, uh, things have changed. And this current agreement is for two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Now, if you look at the staff notes, there is a typo in your staff notes. Um, I was a little bit high on one of my, uh, notes for the computer-aided dispatch. The hundred and forty-five thousand dollar number should be a hundred and forty-four thousand zero hun- zero, I'm sorry, a hundred and forty-four thousand ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents. There was a module that we decided that we didn't need, that we had taken out, and that was carried forward in the contract that's in front of you. The contract is correct. I just missed putting it in my staff notes and missed that dollar amount in our staff notes. Part of this process is two hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, of course, is a lot of money. Because it's split between computer-aided dispatch and records management, the computer-aided dispatch portion can have a separate funding mechanism than our records management system. We have a wireless nine-one-one fund that is, that we collect money on for cell phones. And we use that to pay wi- wireless and nine-one-one fees. If there's money that is not used by the end of that year, that goes, it gets set aside into a set-aside fund to get used for future expenses. That's regulated heavily, and we can only use it for certain processes, and that process is related to nine-one-one call services. So, of that two hundred and seventy-seven, uh, thousand dollar contract, roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand of that can be paid with these wireless nine-one-one funds. So, we can bring that price down significantly. With the provider, uh, because this was in a future CIP, they had, they worked out, we agreed that they would take twenty-five percent now, which is fifty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents, to get that process started immediately. They want, uh, the agreement has fifty percent on October one, which is when our CIP would normally kick in, and that money is already allocated there. And then twenty-five percent at the completion, along with the annual maintenance fee of sixty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents. Of that annual fee, half of that can be paid with these wireless nine-one-one funds. We currently have, uh, over four hundred thousand dollars in our set-aside funds, plus the money that's coming in. So, we, the money is there to be used for this type of purpose, uh, which is a good thing. So, with all of this, we can start our records management upgrade process immediately without having to wait farther down the road. It is a fourteen-month process. Uh, so, there, the expect, expected finish date is approximately May of two thousand twenty-four, um, depending on how well those transitions go. Because it's the same company and it is an upgrade instead of a redo, um, the, uh, the implementation, uh, they, they've worked with our database, and, uh, the transferring the data is the big piece, and, uh, we're planning that, um, hoping that that goes smoother than if we would just go with a whole new company. So, my request is to go forward with this. We did go to subcommittee, um, and the subcommittee was, uh, their, their instruction was to bring this forward to the full council to, uh, continue on with the, uh, computer upgrade. It's a Windows-based system compared to, if you're familiar with an A, with the call it NAS four hundred, it's a green screen old database. But it served us well, but it's definitely long overdue. Um, it will save a lot of time for the officers, because the information, when they put it in the first time, it'll carry through the whole process, instead of right now, we'll literally enter a name, date of birth, um, social security number, up to eight times, depending on the circumstances and the process we currently have to go through. We also have multiple databases for. We also have multiple databases for training and records and administrative and training, uh, policies. And this will be able to incorporate everything together, and it's a pride and true system.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, sitting through that subcommittee meeting and your demonstration of what you have now versus what you'll have with this, I think saying it's a vast improvement is a great understatement.
Absolutely.
Create a lot of efficiencies with, in what you do, and it's, yeah, it's absolutely necessary and needed, I think.
Thank you.
Chief, I do have a couple of comments. So the 750 that was budgeted a few years ago, did that include any of that barcoding, uh, for evidence? And if so?
That, that number has floated for so many years, I can't even tell you that was in it originally years ago. I will say that, you know, we had that conversation earlier, this current agreement includes the barcoding.
It does?
It does.
Okay, good.
Now, what it does not include is approximately $1,000 to $1,500 of hardware, scanners, printers, that type of thing. Uh, that is not included in the agreement, uh, but that's a small enough number. If this gets passed, we can, we can find a way to make that happen.
Okay. Cause I know, uh, when we visited with Chief Shear down in, in Columbus, he, um, was very complimentary of this particular, uh, program. And so I do think it would be a huge benefit for you guys to have that.
And, and to add to your conversation or your comment, we, since that visit, we've ta, I've talked to our support services staff, verified that it was part of the current agreement, and our intention would be to make that transition immediately, um, as part of our, our plans as we're going forward with this upgrade over the next 14 months. So the barcoding will be part of that because it's already included in the agreement.
Your dispatchers have seen this program and?
Uh, we've had, when we did our, we had demos and I had dispatchers, record staff, um, administrative staff, uh, IT. We had a demonstration with all of those, and then when we went down to, uh, visit another agency, uh, we brought record supervisors, dispatch supervisors, patrol officers, and we, different, different entities had the option to look at it. And we're, of course, there's a learning curve with everything, um, but this is something should have been done a long time ago, and we're excited for the potential when it's done, um, once we can pass that learning curve, of course.
So they all had some input and?
Yeah, absolutely.
Seems like they must like it, right?
Yes. Oh, yeah, this, this wasn't done in a vacuum. This has been, we've talked about it, we've done demos over the years. You know, I went down to, I went to, I don't remember, with a couple of different communities, um, five, six years ago, trying to get the information together to get this going, and we were never able to materialize everything. And of course, now we had to do it all over again because information was, wasn't current anymore. So we've had buy-in and input from all areas of the, the department. This was definitely not done by, in a vacuum, by an individual.
Module that you left out or, or took out of there, it didn't add up to much, that was maybe 600 bucks or something. Is that something you? You, you adjusted the number of 145?
It was an $1,800 module.
What was that for? Are you sure you don't need it in the future?
We had to add things for, like, uh, Pulse Point is one of the things that we need. Uh, transferring data to other agencies we had to need. There was, there, there's a whole suite of possibilities that you could have, and there was one that we determined that we, we weren't going to need right now. We can always add it later if we need to, but we weren't going to pay for it until we needed it. Uh, and we can, if we'd have, decided we needed it in the future, we would do a change order. They don't charge for cha, change orders. They would just charge for whatever that upgrade would be at the time.
So it'd still include Pulse Point, then?
We're still using Pulse Point.
Okay.
Yeah. Pulse Point, and we have to, we, uh, dump our, our data into Madison. Uh, there's a much separate module that we had to have for that, and if another agency would want data dumped, we would have to do that. So, um, it was another agency that was looking at, um, having their data dumped that we didn't need to, so that wasn't included. If they decide later on they want to, then they will, and they would, and they would pay for that. Um, if an agency wants us to give them data, that's their responsibility, so they would pay for that.
Sure. I think the only, the only other thing that comes to mind is eight years in the CIP and we didn't do anything. Is there a, I, well, I shouldn't say we didn't do anything because you looked into it, probably didn't fit our needs at the, at the time, but, um, does it seem like the right decision? Or we waited too long, or?
Well, it would.
Why did it go eight years? I mean, I think that's going to be a question of the public of why did we?
Right. It, it would have been, it would have been nice to do it years ago, circumstances, you know, we make the decisions at that time. Um, the money gets allocated for higher priorities at the time, and we've said, we've always said in this, we've had this conversation. We've always said at the police department, we'll, we'll get by. I mean, um, should we be doing our upgrades? Should we be doing the dis, joining dispatch? Should we be doing things? We'll make it work until we can find the means to ma, pull it all together. And, you know, the last couple of years, things are starting to come together, and the things worked out to be able to, to do something like this. And they're, we're busy with these changes, but they're all good changes, and we're, it's a, it's a process. It's a lot of work for us, but in the end, it'll be good.
True. I couldn't imagine re-entering somebody's name and birthday then eight times. It's gotta be frustrating for them, so I'm sure they appreciate it.
And as an example, that would be the citation, the jail booking, uh, the jail databases for their, for their medical interests and stuff, um, the reports, their evidence, you know, there's, as you go through that process, that would all be eliminated. And it also eliminates the chance of error. You change somebody's, put somebody's name in multiple times, you're going to misspell something, you're going to transpose a number. You know, the, the chances for that error is, is there. We're, we're human beings. And this will, I mean, nothing is perfect, but it will significantly increase our ability to have accurate information. And there, and there's a whole bunch, I didn't even get into all of the, the other capabilities, but it's a, it, it will make, like I said, it'll include our, we have a different database for jail and, and records, and it'll be one system that will work very well.
Right.
The officers will be able to use their mobile data computers, um, you know, they can check themselves off on a call. Just hit, literally push button on the screen to say that I arrived at the call versus having to call the dispatchers and do those things. And there's different reasons we'll do both, but it, the, it just, it streamlines the process more than I can even describe. It's ama, it's, it's amazing, and we've been doing without for a long time, but it's, it's time to get things going.
One more thing.
Sure.
And, and you brought it up in the subcommittee meeting when we discussed this, but I think that it, the, the public will see something different too. At least the ones that wanted to see public notices or public, uh, arrests, I guess. I'm not sure what it is. That you, that you put that report out there and it looks like it's in dot matrix and it came out of a, a NAS400, you know? An old green screen or an old?
The ability to track information. And, you know, once in a while, all, some of you guys will request reports.
Reports, there you go, that's what I was saying.
And, uh, when it comes time to, to pull some of the data that's requested, we have to write queries, and it's, it's a huge process to get that information out of there. It's, it's there, but it's not very user-friendly. And the ability to automate reports. Now, let's say an agency wants to have every month or every day or whatever it is, they want to know how many calls for service, because we dispatch for 16 different agencies. We can set up that report and the first of the month or the eight o'clock every morning or whatever we set, it'll automatically generate that report and email it to them. And it just automates those things instead of us having to manually do that over and over and over again.
So it should help them around?
It should.
I would think so.
Absolutely.
I would think it's gotta be a contributor, right?
Absolutely. All the improvements we make, I mean, they've, they've, they all help.
Thanks, Chief.
Any other questions? Discussion?
I was just kinda, I was in the subcommittee too, and I was kinda surprised we're still using the NAS400, so. Uh, to have a software that communicates is important, I think, in 2023, so I'm all for this investment.
Right. Any other discussion? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any public input? Seeing and hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 33 would look for a motion to consider approval of an application for economic development program funds for Elkhorn Valley Community Development Corporation, doing business as Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska for $200,000 to establish the Norfolk Rural Workforce Housing Fund, and authorizing appropriate city officials to formulate and sign the documents necessary to effectuate this loan.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
I'll second that.
Motion second. To hear some background on this, we'll hear from Candace Alder, our city economic developer. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. Yes, we're offering for your consideration an application for economic development program funds, um, also known as LB840. And, uh, Elkhorn, or Elkhorn Valley Community Development Corporation, uh, under Neighbor Works has made this application. We've had some great conversations with Roger's team and heard some successes that he's had in other communities following this same format. So, uh, we explored this alongside the Economic Development Subcommittee at a January 12 and February 24, uh, subcommittee meeting. And what we're presenting to you is an opportunity to provide a loan for up to $200,000, which will be used as a cash match requirement to then apply for a $1 million loan, or a grant from the state Nebraska Department of Economic Development. And that would be for rural workforce housing funds. And we're proposing that this loan actually be forgivable, 99% forgivable, if the following criteria is met. We're asking the applicant to, um, follow through and establish a Norfolk Rural Workforce Housing Fund, which will be a perpetual revolving loan fund. That loan fund's going to follow the fund investment plan that's been enclosed in your packet, and Roger's going to speak a little bit to that and kind of provide a broad overview of that as well. Uh, we're asking that that fund be restricted to Norfolk and our two-mile zoning jurisdiction. We're also asking that all the funds leveraged by the, uh, state and Nebraska Rural Workforce Housing Funds and Norfolk Economic Development Program Funds remain in there indefinitely. And then we're asking that the applicant would utilize this revolving loan fund for the creation of at least 30 workforce housing units within three years of the fund award. So that's kind of the criteria that we outlined to, to show if, if this criteria is met, this is, this would be forgivable. And Roger, I'd just ask you to come up and share a little bit about the fund and how it'd work, and maybe a little bit of success that you've seen.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. This is Candace, I'm Roger Nandrick. I'm the CEO of Neighbor Works Northeast Nebraska, and very excited to have this opportunity for you to consider providing some funds for us to apply for Rural Workforce Housing Fund here in Norfolk. Talked to Mayor and Andy for a few years about getting one going here in Norfolk, but, uh, due to various, um, situations, we, we did not apply in the past rounds. But there's an open round right now with the state of Nebraska to apply for the Rural Workforce Housing Funds. It is a grant from the, the state, and the maximum that one can apply for is $1 million. And the state requires a 50% match from the local community to be able to apply for that amount. So with your consideration of the $200,000 to go towards that cash match, we have another source to cover the other $300,000. So we'll be submitting an application for $1 million, and upon award, have a total of $1.5 million revolving loan fund. And that's what it is. It's a revolving loan fund that continues on perpetually. And, um, so it's not for us as Neighbor Works to use for any housing projects that we're working on necessarily, but it can be. But also, it's available for other builders and developers to apply for loan funds from us. So actually, we are a lender in that situation. And, um, our goal is to offer the loan funds at a below-market rate, uh, loan, to give an incentive to builders and developers to use the funds, as well as hopefully keeps their, their costs of development, um, of rental or ownership houses at a lower cost. We've been administering a, a loan fund like this in Columbus for five years. Um, they applied two different rounds, and we were successful in getting both rounds funded. And so right now, we're administering about a $3.5 million loan fund in Columbus. I work with Skylar, helped them get, uh, two rounds of funding there too, and they're right at a $3 million loan fund. So we, as an organization, have experience in doing it, and so we're excited for this opportunity to create a loan fund here in Norfolk. Um, so not only are we submitting application right now for this community, but I'm also working with Columbus to apply, to get another, uh, fund there and David City. So we're writing three different grant applications to bring more funds to Norfolk.
Great. Thank you, Roger.
Sure.
Uh, I got one question. Do, um, are, are housing rehab projects qualified to apply for these loan funds? Or is it just new construction?
Good question. I meant to cover that. There's four ways, four types of housing projects these funds can be used for, and this is by state statute. It's for new construction, whether it's rental or homeownership, major rehab, if the rehab costs are more than 50% of the current assessed value, which I understand here in Norfolk, that's not eligible to be used if the property is that, uh, far gone. Also can be upper-story housing developments, such as like downtown housing, and converting a building that's not housing right now, but make it into a, a housing development. Those four uses.
Great. Thank you.
So in Columbus, if the house is more than 50%, the cost, they're allowed to rehab that house?
Um, we have not used the funds for that. That really hasn't come up yet. Um, it's an eligible use of the funds, but if it's not eligible in the community, then the community.
I'm just asking of what other communities do in that.
Yeah. I know there's been some smaller communities, um, that have used it for that, uh, just because they're given housing pricing, price point, and their needs there, so.
Any other questions? Okay.
And I would say we have a good chance of getting funded, uh, because the dollar amount of the pre-applications was below the maximum amount available in the pot. So, um, with your support, we should be able to get a fund going here in Norfolk.
Great. Something, a long time coming. Thank you, Roger. Any public input on this?
I think it's important to note that these are LB840, from the city, it's going to be LB840 funding, uh, for this request, and that has a sunset on it here shortly. And this will allow those LB840 funds to stay revolving within our community instead of just, you know, essentially being gone altogether, so.
Then a couple meetings ago, we, um, we put all of these LB840 funds in this, allocated it to the workforce housing.
Yeah, so a couple meetings ago, we actually adopted into the economic development plan, um, workforce housing activities. So we had to adopt that into the plan in order to make this application.
What's the total amount of funding?
Just over $300,000.
Yes, just, thanks. Can't remember the exact amount, but it's less than $301,000.
So originally, we were going to use all of those funds, weren't we, for the workforce housing?
This application did originally have a $300,000 ask.
Yeah.
And we did receive, uh, another application that's currently being considered. And we're kind of going through that due diligence phase before we present that to you. And we visited with Roger when that happened, and, um, he was able to make some adjustments in the match and, um, secure that other side, but still allow us to be a partner, so.
So that other application initiated?
That other application?
Initiated the reduction in?
Correct.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. Hearing none?
I would, I would just say I would like to keep the funds all there until the other application's approved or denied. That's what I would say.
I don't think we have the luxury of doing that due to a time constraint. Don't you need to have this submitted?
Or do we need to allocate the money to him tonight? Is that your saying?
Yeah. Roger needs to know moving forward to, in order to make his grant application by March 23rd.
And the application is due March 23rd?
And we do not like to make, we do not like to wait until the 23rd in the grant-making world.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative, motion carries.
Item 34, look for a motion to consider approval of real estate purchase agreement, of a, a real estate purchase agreement with option and right of first refusal for the sale of city's parking lot located north of the Kensington to HCI Real Estate Company Ho-Chunk for $1 with buyback prevention, provisions.
I'll make a motion for consid. I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second. For some background on this, we'll hear from Dan. For some background on this, we'll hear from Danny Nolies Myers, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. HCI Real Estate's purchase of the Kensington from the housing agency, which was discussed earlier tonight when you said as the community development agency, their purchase of that, of the Kensington, is contingent upon HCI's ability to secure adequate parking rights in the city's parking lot to the north of the hotel. The agreement before you provides for the sale of the parking lot to HCI simultaneous with and contingent upon HCI's closing of the purchase of the Kensington. This agreement includes an option for the city to buy back the parking lot for $1 if, at some point in the future, the city decides to build a parking structure on the property. It also contains a right of first refusal, allowing the city to purchase the property for $1 in the event HCI seeks to sell the parking lot to a third party for use other than a parking lot for a hotel. I'm happy to answer any additional questions on the agreement before you.
Okay, thank you, Danny, any questions?
Thank you for getting that, right of first refusal negotiated in that contract.
Yeah, I can say this discussion has been going on for some time as part of the negotiations with, between the housing agency and Ho Chunk for purchase of the Kensington for hotel redevelopment. Pretty clearly, a hotel needs adequate parking to be sustainable, and I think through the various discussions between the parties, Subcommittee of the Council, and with PPD, we've come to a reasonable agreement here that will allow this project, that will bring a lot of benefit to downtown Norfolk to move forward. So I appreciate the staff work involved. Any other questions or comments? Public input?
Jim McKenzie, first of all, I appreciate Ho Chunk's interest in Norfolk and consideration of investing in the community. Ho Chunk is a multimillion-dollar corporation, according to their 2021 annual report, they had revenues of approximately $400 million and net income of over $20 million. The Housing Board negotiated to sell them the Kensington for 1.5 million. At that point in time, there was nothing about the parking or TIF. They mentioned that, but I don't believe that was in their original proposal. Later on, Ho Chunk asked for almost $2 million in TIF funds, and these are tax dollars the city won't receive for 15 years. I might be dead before we get a dollar of property taxes on the facility. Meanwhile, the rest of the taxpayers in Norfolk will make up the difference. I understand with the proliferation of use of TIF, that Ho Chunk wants the citizens to give them the TIF, but I have a problem with the parking lot for a dollar. The citizens of Norfolk, the taxpayers of Norfolk, own that parking lot. This agreement is contemplated with the transfer of the parking lot, and it says it's worth $268,000. It's probably worth even more than that. It costs way more than that to reproduce that. You know, this is the first time the citizens have really been informed that the ask is for them to contribute directly to a boutique hotel with their own property. I don't believe the citizens should have to subsidize a boutique hotel with a multimillion-dollar corporation on the backs of taxpayers. I don't blame Ho Chunk for asking for it. I mean, every corporation's going to try and maximize their profits. However, I am asking Ho Chunk to be a good corporate citizen and a fair partner to the city of Norfolk and the citizens, and pay fair market share for the parking lot which is owned by the citizens of Norfolk. That money could go toward the needs of the community, as we've already talked about, there are many. So I urge the tabling of this item, so it can be negotiated with Ho Chunk to pay fair market value for the property that's owned by the citizens of Norfolk. I also have a concern in the agreement, it talks about city has first right of refusal to build a parking garage, I assume at taxpayer expense, those are going to be a couple million dollars, and then the agreement says we're going to give them use of X number of spots that remain they think they need. So is that going to be a taxpayer-funded too? Are we going to, taxpayers are going to fund the parking garage as well? The agreement just seemed very strange, but anyway, if we're going to transfer just the parking lot, I think we need to get out of the parking garage thing, that the city's going to build that and have them pay fair market value for it.
Aren't some of the garages privately owned in other towns? Private investment? There's not saying it's actually going to be, has to be city-owned, or...
I can speak to why we structured it that way. In staff conversations, it did come up that with the downtown growing, that in the future there might be a need for a parking garage. In our conversations with Ho Chunk, Ho Chunk understands that, the representatives understand that, and we have one here tonight if she wants to speak to it. So when we looked at structuring this deal, understanding that that could be a parking lot that's central to the needs of our downtown as it grows, and understanding that that could be a prime location, there is, as far as I know, there have been no immediate plans to put a parking structure there, whether private, public, or some kind of hybrid of a public-private partnership for that. We just wanted to leave the door open to that in case there was something in the future to where that would make sense. And that is why that's contemplated within this, so that if the city decides to put that there, whether that's just city-initiated, or that's in cooperation with Ho Chunk, that that is an option that we could exercise. We'd give them eight months of notice before we would start that project, but that is currently, unless the city administrator can, correct me if I'm wrong, I do not believe we have anything contemplated for that. We just wanted to leave the door open, understanding that downtown is growing rapidly.
Sure, so the concept of a parking garage has been just talked about in Subcommittee meetings and kind of a long-term vision. I think that a project like that would be a pretty massive undertaking, but I think having that door remain open with the formation of a business improvement district, and I think looking at Norfolk's future growth, we don't know what the downtown's going to look like in 20, 30 years. We don't know what's going to happen, so I think having that available as an option down the road, if we want to have, and knowing Ho Chunk, or whatever owner this would transfer to in the future, if that were to happen, would be a partner with us to make sure that that would happen. And I did want to clarify a couple of things. So it's true that the lot is owned by the city of Norfolk, so in essence, the citizens of Norfolk, but I just want to be very clear that the taxpayers that paid for this lot that you're talking about, as well as the demolition of the building that was on that at one time, was funded by the downtown vehicle parking district owners of property within that district. So it was not among, I believe, Randy, you can correct me on this, but this was funded by the vehicle parking district taxpayers?
Yes, that's correct.
So, really from that, any sale of this that were to happen down the road would, even if it were to be sold today, that money would go back to the vehicle parking district downtown. And so this has been discussed with the downtown vehicle parking district owners. If I were to have one regret, that I would have now, would have been formulating a larger plan to try to make them whole down the road for the vehicle parking district. But a project like this has involved a lot of different discussions, it's been very complicated, you've got multiple owners here, and I think we've been just trying to work hard to try to make sure that we're working along with Ho Chunk, we want to make sure that we have this investment downtown. It is true that there's TIF financing going into this, but I also want to be clear, there's upwards of $13 million or more of private funding that is also going into this building, so, which is a pretty massive amount of money that you would want to have, that hopefully will help all ships rise with all of our local business owners downtown. So, and I think that, you know, Ho Chunk has made it very clear that this lot is needed for this development, but they're also trying to make their numbers work as they've presented them to us as well. So, I just want to kind of help paint the larger picture of this, and I know it's probably a little bit more than what you originally wanted to know, but the parking garage component of this is a long-term, future discussion. That's going to involve a lot of different pieces coming together, and that would not be something that the entire city would necessarily pay for. I think the first place you'd look is, what is the need? Can you even make a cash flow with charging rents? I don't know what any of that will look like, but we wanted to leave that door open so we can have those discussions down the road.
Andy, in terms of economic development with this kind of project, a hotel in your downtown, a 13-plus million-dollar project, renovation, construction, the number of rooms available, the new people it brings into downtown, that payoff can't be very long in terms of the deal, so to speak, that's being made here. That new economic activity that is not there right now will more than outweigh the cost of the parking lot at this point in time. It would be my assessment.
I would agree with you, Mayor, and I think the extra activity this could bring downtown to really augment what's already happening downtown, you know, those benefits are, you know, I don't, your guess is as good as mine is what those are, but I would hope that they're substantial over time as the community grows and we attract more people to downtown. And so, I think that from an economic development standpoint, this is an investment in the community, and I think it has a lot of merit, and it's a very exciting project, I think, for the entire community, and something that everybody can benefit from. You know, there's still sales tax we get from, you know, this hotel and any additional activity that would take place downtown to be an offshoot of this. If there's community rooms and business rooms, conventions, those kinds of things that we'd want to have people come to town, you know, Tracy and her team do a very good job of trying to attract those, and something like this would be nice to have in addition to all the other amenities we have throughout the community. And we already know there's a need for more hotel rooms. I don't think they'd be doing this if there wasn't, and we've been hearing that in our economic development circles and Visitors Bureau, that there is a need for more hotel rooms in town as well. So I think this hits the mark. A lot of staff work went in to making this happen. We've been having a lot of conversations inside this building and outside this building, and I think we're very proud to present this to the city council tonight.
Okay, thank you, Andy.
Andy, I do have a question on that. So if they do take possession of that parking lot, would there still be public parking? Or would it just be restricted to hotel residents, or guests, sorry?
Well, it would be restricted just for the hotel. So they have their, they would have their staff, they would have their parking needs for their guests. But I think too, when the Kensington was full, and it was used as an apartment complex, they had the primary use of that lot even at that time. So I think giving this to a private owner will start generating some tax base for this, and I don't know the net change on parking downtown, I don't, because it was solely used primarily by the Kensington to begin with.
Thank you.
Is that property on the tax rolls right now?
No, Councilman, it is not. It's owned by the Norfolk Housing Agency, so they're tax-exempt as a public body, as well as the parking lot.
So will we have a base, then? Will the base come back, the base evaluation?
Yes, the assessor, I believe, will determine that base. I can't tell you today what that base amount is going to be, for sure, but there's a process for them to, you know, maybe Alexia can speak to that. They're working on those things with the assessor for their plan, but yes, there is a base that'll be determined, so then that base value will then, today, or whenever that would be effective, would go to all the taxing entities within there. And today, there is none.
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, Council. Alexia Boggs here with Ho Chunk. Just kind of want to keep it brief, I know it's getting late, but I just want to echo on what some folks said. I don't see anything but upside on this project. As Andy stated, currently, the city is getting zero tax revenue off of the parking lot and the lot that the housing authority owns. So we will be taking a non-taxable parcels and putting them on the tax roll. So with the expiration of TIF, then there's going to be, you know, that huge upside of taxable owner entity that would own these two parcels, so. As well as, you know, in the interim, we'd be maintaining and improving it out of private dollars instead of public dollars as well, so. And 13, 14 million dollar project coming to the city has a lot of, as you know, discretionary income that will flow throughout the community, and so, yeah, I don't really see much more than just, you know, a change of ownership, right? The apartments needed a parking lot for their apartments, the hotel's going to need a parking lot for their hotel tenants, so. But anyway, I want to thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be here.
Tell me why you chose Norfolk? Why is it attractive to you guys? I mean, it's a, to bring a Marriott to a town of 25,000 people into our downtown, it's a pretty cool opportunity, but can you tell me what you guys seen as qualifiers for our community that made you want to invest in our downtown?
Well, the housing authority put the hotel up, did a RFQ, and we responded to that RFQ, and we are hotel developers, owners, we've done them in the past, and so this is really in our wheelhouse. And Norfolk is just really our backyard, we're, you know, just, you know, short drive away, and so it was, seemed like a good fit, so we responded, and we did some interview due diligence with the housing authority, and we were selected, so. And it's definitely, we, part of our due diligence, you know, we did a market feasibility study, and so it seemed like it was going to be definitely the right fit for us as well.
How fast do you think you guys will be, like, tearing into it and making this thing happen? How fast will we start?
As soon as we take ownership of it, which will, you know, the parking lot's contingent, and TIF is contingent upon making this project financeable through private funding, and so when we get through that process and we became owners of it, we will still have to do our MA&amp;E design work, so that's, you know, maybe four to six months of design work, then we will start the demo and then construction phase. And so we're thinking probably perhaps in 18 months from beginning of that till the end.
Are you looking at keeping the character of the building, or have you gone that far to even think that far into it?
Yes, we will keep the character of it.
Building is on the National Register of Historic Places. What is the projected number of hotel rooms?
62.
62. And a conference, a projected conference area?
There'll be a space room, restaurant as well, fitness room, just, you know, your usual Marriott staples.
Yeah, number of jobs, new jobs projected? Do you have that yet or not?
I don't have that in front of me. I'd have to look, but I think it might be part of that.
All right, thank you, Alexia.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to make public comment?
Chairwoman of the Vehicle Parking District. Just wanted to share, we are excited, very much excited to the Vehicle Parking District, we're excited about this project, and wants to see it happen, and appreciate you considering our work. The only issue that has come up with it is, well, it is not really, I don't know whether to call it an issue, but with the approval, first of all, the Vehicle Parking District approved it as a lease, and then it came back that it wanted the project required to purchase. And the Vehicle Parking District did agree to that at their last meeting with a condition that if the property comes back, either with a chance to purchase it back for a dollar, or as, or if it was sold, let's see, I'm trying to think what the conditions were.
First right of refusal, I think.
First right of refusal, yes. Any of those conditions, that that would, the ownership basically would stay with the Parking District, that when it comes back, and that there would be something, and with that, the city agreed to that, but the Vehicle Parking District wanted to have something that showed that in writing, and it was suggested a resolution, and that didn't make it by tonight. The resolution agreement is not part of this for you to consider tonight. Candace has said she's going to call an economic development meeting for Monday, so that we can go through that and get the terms of that figured out. I mean, I'm disappointed it's not here, wanted to see it be part of this when you made your decision, or that be part of the approval. With that, I guess I don't know, I feel like a lot of times there's confusion, and I think with the city council, there's been confusion in the past, as to why it goes to the city as far as... as far as ownership, because the Vehicle Parking District can't own it. But who paid for it? It was the businesses in the downtown. And I've got something here to make that clear. I mean, are you all clear on how that happens? Anybody not clear on how that happens? I've got, well, and I would like, this is my own tax statements that I got in the mail this week, just shows the difference that I would pass out, but I don't really want these spread around the community necessarily, but if it would help clarify it to you why this is, I would share them. If you look. This is for a building that we own in the downtown, yes. And then on the second page, it's a building that we own that's not in the downtown. So when we say that the businesses downtown pay for it, they decided when they formed a Vehicle Parking District to tax themselves. That means that the businesses in between First Street and Eighth Street, Madison and Brash, put a tax on themselves to pay for things like the sidewalks, the lighting, the planters, the taking care of the parking lot, cleaning the parking lots, removing snow, paying for lighting in the parking lot, buying buildings, taking them down and making them into parking lots. So that is something that's happened with the funds. If you look on this tax statement, you will see I highlighted in there where it says PD number one, and that's the tax amount that is assessed. It's pretty close to the same thing the county gets. It's a little more than the city gets, actually, that goes to the Parking District. If you look on page two, it shows a property that we do not have in the downtown, and if you look in that same spot, in between city and agricultural, or ag society, I don't know what that is, A G, I'm not sure what that is. Ag society? There's nothing there. So businesses, residents, anybody outside of A Street to First Street, Madison to Brash, do not get access for PD number one. Only those businesses in PD number one pay that tax, then they take that tax, they took that tax, and they bought the Montgomery Ward Building that sat on Fourth and Brash, tore it down, paved a parking lot with their money. So this is something that, you know, we want to, we want to be a good community, partner with this, and we want to see this happen, and if we were doing it, we would want a parking lot with it, too. You can't run a hotel without a parking lot. So we get it, we understand it. But with that, we've donated two parking lots already in the downtown to other causes where we didn't get anything. This would be number three. And Jim is correct, it's, if we were to replace it, the cost would be more like $700,000. So though the valuation is at 284, right now that we would get an overlay allowance, that does not replace it, that doesn't replace 72 parking spaces that were bought and paid for. So we want to see the, I guess what I'm here to say, we want to see the agreement go through, but we do want that noted, that we want the discussions on Monday to be fair to the Parking District.
We want to see that evaluation that is in there at some form, because right now the VPD is giving up a lot, but nothing in writing saying anything but a dollar.
Right. I guess that's the concern.
Yeah, so Norfolk Housing Authority is going to get their money from Ho-Chunk and Development. They're not going to do it unless they have the VPD lot. The VPD lot saying their lot's worth a dollar, and the city's saying, well, we'll give you the appraised amount in overlay, but that's not going to come out of the original purchase price of the building. So just to have clarification, and so people understand, right now the VPD is signing over their lot for a dollar in hopes that the city gives them back at least the appraised value and repairs to improve the assets that the VPD owns, or the city owns, in return. But right now, we have nothing.
Which is on the council agenda next.
Yeah, but right now, it's just by faith and understanding.
It's, yeah. And the reason we're asking for that is that, and we asked for it at our last meeting and made it part of our motion, because so many times in the past, the reason this happens and is just, I mean, it's the VPD not doing their part in it. You know, we agreed to it, everybody's friends and neighbors, and we're going to do this. Well, then administration changes, new people come in, nobody's aware of the agreement, so years down the road, everybody here might be gone, but that, anything happens that that returns, that really goes back, really should go back to the businesses in the downtown, the ownership of that property. And I can't say, I'm trying to avoid ownership, because we don't legally, we can't, the city does. But the benefit, I should say, the benefit of it needs to go back to the businesses in the downtown.
I appreciate that, Connie, and I understand your perspective. The benefit of new development to downtown, does that bring value to the VPD?
It does.
Participants and taxpayers?
Right. It does. I agree that it does, but we don't know what that will be. We don't know if that, you know, at this time, you know, maybe, maybe at that time, maybe it's 20 years down the road, it comes back for some way, and everybody can look at it and say, well, gee, look at how we benefited. We got this, we got our value back, or we got two times more, three times more. But right now, we don't know that. So this is just like a safeguard in there for the businesses that order.
So what you're essentially asking for is a resolution written up based on what we're considering here tonight, just in writing, and some kind of agreement with the VPD that exists within the confines of the agreements that are being considered tonight by the council?
Yes, and I'm not saying that I think it wouldn't happen, I just want it to be noted tonight.
Yeah.
Okay? I just want it to be noted.
It's also important to say, like, with the purchase of this Kensington, I agree, I wish it would have been all spelled out and signed and, like, the VPD, and there'd be an understanding. But by the time the Norfolk Housing Authority gets done with this purchase, about a million dollars is going to go back to low-income housing. And then the Norfolk Housing Authority is getting out from under a property they can't afford.
And then that's good. That's all good stuff.
Yeah, this property empty would hurt our downtown.
I'm not trying to compete.
No.
Any of those dollars, not trying.
So.
Do we need to make an amendment on the resolution that's not in this now?
I think it'd be, Danny, I'd look for your advice, either amend what's coming here tonight, given the resolution being done, or table until next time. I guess I'd look for an opinion on if it's tabled into next week, whether that interferes with any of the processes with Ho-Chunk's redevelopment plan.
I don't know if there's some reason that it needs to go forward. If it does, I'm willing to do that. Like I said, I just want it to be noted that there's an unfinished portion that needs to be completed.
Alexia, we appreciate your input on whether.
I do need you to stop to stay on together, because we have it, the purchase fully paid tied to tonight's, only that probably.
And I'm not asking for you to delay that. Not what I'm asking.
We definitely don't want to send a message to Ho-Chunk that we're excited for you guys to invest in our downtown, and we don't want to see this property not be utilized, and there's been a lot of hard work to get it to this point, to see an investment like yours happen. This ain't perfect by any means, but it needs to go forward. You don't want to jeopardize what we're doing.
Connie, how would you summarize what you're asking for, as short as you can?
A written agreement that says that the property, if it comes back in, like, a dollar purchase, you know, like, it's in there that, at some point, the city has the option to purchase it back, that the business owners in the downtown get the benefit of that, or if it's, why do I keep forgetting the other option?
First right of refusal.
I can help you. Would you like me to help you, Connie?
Yeah. If there's a first right of refusal.
You're doing a great job.
That, again, that the businesses in the downtown receive the benefit of that.
Correct. And so basically, what she's talking about is, and within Section 14, the right of first refusal, is how it's structured right now is that if they're to sell, if HCI looks to sell the parking lot, just the parking lot, they have to give the city the option to buy it back for $1. Well, the right of first refusal, if you will, for $1. However, perhaps a buyer goes to HCI and says, we want the parking lot for this reason, and the city agrees that it's a good reason, and let's say perhaps it's a $300,000 purchase price. Then per this agreement in Section 14D, 50% of the fair market value of that would come back to the city of Norfolk. And what Connie is referencing is a conversation during a VPD meeting where the ask was, if that 50% comes back to the city, can that then be transferred to the VPD due to the fact that at the beginning, this piece of property was sold for $1 to HCI for the purposes of development of the Hotel Norfolk project? Is that correct?
That's correct.
What about the equal value of improvements that the city said there would be?
Yeah, those aren't, yeah, the amount that we were told isn't noted in here either. Again, if that would just be noted, that there was supposed to be something, you know, given to the VPD at this time, in the way of overlays.
And that's coming up, that's.
That's on the agenda next.
Two items away from now, but that's when we'll discuss that, that piece, Councilman.
Yeah, those were the two things that were, I guess those are the two things that were discussed and that the board approved this, thinking that those two things were happening.
That's correct.
So we don't hold up the purchase by the next council agenda? Can we do what Connie's asking for? I mean, she's not asking for anything out of line. I mean, is there anything that we can assure the VPD that they're getting what their ask is?
Councilman, I think that we've got the marching orders, and again, I'll kind of rephrase that. My biggest regret in this is that I didn't have that ready for Connie tonight. And so we'll work hard to get something put together for council to consider, so that it meets everything to give her those and the VPD, sorry, but Connie, on behalf of the VPD, the safeguards they need to know, that they're going to be part of this process, they will receive the benefits, any future benefits that could come from this, potential sale or whatever would happen from this first right of refusal, all those things would ultimately come right back to the VPD.
So I guess essentially, we're asking for the trust that this will get done as it was intended to, and you guys can trust us that if the approval on the asphalt overlays happens, that that work's going to get done as well.
That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Sure.
I'm not sure how clear all this is, but so it sounds like the VPD feels they own the property, the VPD wants to give the property to Ho-Chunk for a dollar, but then the VPD wants the taxpayers to cough up $268,000, $300,000, whatever it is, in benefit to the VPD to compensate for them giving away that property. Is that correct?
We haven't identified a funding source yet. The next item on the agenda, if that's what you're referring to, is just simply to put out for bids, so we know what that would be if we were to offer some assistance to the downtown to repave some parking lots or to do some overlays as part of our citywide overall overlay. So Jim, yes, you're accurate in that sense, but I think a big part of this is that this is a benefit for the whole community, this is a benefit for the downtown, and so I think there's going to, there's going to be long-term revenue coming to the city's general fund long-term from this as well. So I think we can't ignore all of these economic benefits that are going to come to the community as, overall as well.
So the individual or the corporation that built the hotel on Omaha Avenue, that put in their own parking lot, that pays for their own snow removal, through their general fund tax revenues, they're now being, going to be asked, as well as all the citizens of Norfolk, to pay for the parking lot for the Ho-Chunk Boutique Hotel.
We have not identified a funding source yet exactly. That's going to be part of a future discussion the council's going to have when they determine how they're going to pay, if, and how they're going to pay for some parking lot maintenance downtown, Jim.
That's my concern. We talk about we don't have money, and so every time these things come up, well, here's another $300,000, we'll just find it in the budget, and this isn't budgeted either. So at some point in time, you have to say, where does this money come from? And that's, that's my continuing concern, is the taxpayers are not endless, and they don't have an endless supply, and so I don't know where that comes from.
Well, I appreciate that, Jim.
Thank you.
And I can argue with you on a lot of your points.
Any other discussion, Council? From what I heard with the exchange with Connie, marching orders to staff is to finalize the resolution that was intended for tonight, and with all of that, we can keep the purchase process on schedule and have that march forward with the TIF process. Are there any other discussions or comments left on this, Council? Okay, hearing none, short title, please.
Oh, it's just on the agreement. I'm sorry, I've lost track of where we are. So a simple yes or no vote. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, now, item number 35, we'd look for motion to consider ordinance number 5827 authorizing the sale of city's parking lot located north of the Kensington to HCI Real Estate Company and XWT Foreign Corporation authorized to do business in Nebraska, Ho-Chunk, for the purchase price of $1 pursuant to the terms of a real estate purchase agreement with option and right of first refusal between the city and HCI Real Estate Company. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Motion second.
Danny, anything further to say on this?
This is the ordinance that is required anytime a city of the first class conveys a property under Nebraska revised statute 16-202, and following this, there will be a 21-day period for advertising as well as a 30-day period for remonstrance before we can close on this property. So we're anticipating closing hopefully in May, but the contract that was approved earlier says no later than July 15th.
Danny, is all that contingent on all rounds of approval tonight, keeping that process?
Yes, that is correct.
On second and third readings, okay. Any discussion, Council? Any input? Hearing seeing none, short title, please.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to authorize the sale of city property, to provide the terms of sale and authorize the mayor to execute and deliver quitclaim deed to the property, to provide for a remonstrance to said sale as provided by law, to provide when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and to provide with the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Okay, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5827 carries on first reading.
Seeing no opposition to this, I make a motion to suspend the rules and pass this on second and third.
Second up.
Motion second to suspend the rules and approve on second and third readings. If no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Ordinance number 5827 carries on second and third.
Item 36, we'd look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the Asphalt Overlays 2023-1 project, Monroe Avenue, North Victory Road, Madison Avenue, and Vehicle Parking District parking lots.
I'll offer for consideration.
Motion second for some background on this. Steve Ramus, please.
Mayor and Council, I'll have the Assistant City Engineer present this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Anna, welcome.
Good evening. I am not Steve Ramus. I'm Anna Allen, the Assistant Engineer. Wanted to bring forward a consideration of approval to advertise bids for the Asphalt Overlays for 2023. We've identified the areas on Monroe Avenue would be from Fourth Street East towards the transfer station, North Victory Road, from Benjamin Avenue North, about 2,000 feet north of North Victory, or on North Victory Road, north of Benjamin Avenue, Madison Avenue downtown, and the Vehicle Parking District parking lots to do a mill and overlay project on these areas. these areas of town. We, we're working on these plans internally. We're doing the design internally. We have $1 million in the CIP for mill and overlay projects for this budget year. Right now with these areas that we've identified, we are, engineers estimate, not having final quantities, but a, a good estimate was about $865,000. So depending on what these bids come in at, you know, might be a little bit more. We're hoping it'll, it'll stay within the engineers estimate. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just got one on the North Victory Road. Is that, is that city or is that a county road or is that a joint payment or how does that? I guess I was surprised in a way that it falls under us.
It's city, I believe it's city to Magnet Drive.
It was, was that Steve?
It's city up to Magnet Drive. And so we take, we take to the far side of, of city property when we annex. We take to the far side of an adjacent street. So up, up to Magnet Drive, it could be all the way to Eisenhower, but I think for sure it's for sure to Magnet Drive, all city.
Madison Avenue from where to where?
First to Seventh Street.
First to Seventh, okay. And Anna, we're, Steve, the, the $865,000 dedicated to this, is this all CHAF related or do, refresh my memory, did we put some ARPA dollars into this one or not?
It's all, all CHAF.
Okay, okay. All right, any other questions?
You say CHAF was on the.
City highway allocation funds. It's a gas tax.
From the state?
Yes.
CHAF includes our gas taxes, our vehicle registration fees. There's some STP buyback funds, which are state transportation dollars, about 500,000 in there. All in all, it totals right around about 3.7 to 3.8 million a year.
That's what we get from it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
All right, public input?
Can you, can you tell me how much of that is, how much of the estimate is for the Vehicle Parking District parking lots?
I had an estimate of about, Vehicle Parking was about $150,000.
And where are those, how's that being paid? Is that through general city funds or is that through VPD funds?
I think as Andy mentioned here, you know, the exact funding source hasn't been identified for that. First step is to bid it. And then what I heard Andy say was we were going to have a conversation about exactly how to fund that.
So, I mean, the VPD has, I believe, like $60,000 in their budget for, for maintenance. So again, is the rest of the city, are the taxpayers of the city paying for the parking lots in the downtown that benefit the downtown businesses? Because they don't have to pay for their own parking lots like every other business does. So that's the reason for the VPD that it was created, was to create parking and pay for that parking and now you're asking the general fund to pay for that.
In essence, this is an investment in making sure this project happens downtown.
Okay.
Because there's a, there's a large benefit for that.
So we're changing the rules again to make the rest of the city pay for this stuff. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other public input? All right, seeing hearing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, item 37, would look for a motion to consider approval to advertise for bids for the 2023 Johnson's, Johnson Park Improvement Project.
I'll make a motion for consideration.
Second.
Motion second for some background on this. Nate Powell, Parks and Rec Director, please.
Mayor, council, we thought it'd be good to walk through some of the, the items that are included in this project and also what's excluded. There's been discussions about different things and I'll go through the timeline and I'll do this real quick here. This project will include an amphitheater, a performance stage, it'll include three shelters, playground, an aquatic display. It's a splash pad type aquatic display, so it's, it's not a fountain. It's a, actually a flat surface with, and the water sprays up and the kids can run through it if they would like. It'll include a basketball court that'll double as a refrigerated ice rink in the winter, a pedestrian bridge that'll go across the river, angled parking along East Prospect and North Oak, irrigation throughout the park, lights and trails throughout and those trails will have, will be lit as, as I said. What's excluded, what's not included in this, but items that were identified as, as things that we want to do maybe in the future as funding allows, as we find grants available. The mill building, refurbishing that mill building, the historical panels for interpretive walk, second restroom on the north end, nature playground area and, and also discussions of Giant Fork. Again, some of these are for, would be grant funded or privately funded or other funds that we can find that it's available. Things that we are removing, the existing restroom to make way for that basketball court, existing place structures, they are aged out and it's hard to find replacement parts for those aged playground structures. We'll also be moving some smaller trees along Prospect and Oak. We'll just be relocating them within the park and removing about a half dozen or so diseased or dying trees and some around the sports court area. The timeline, open bid on April 20th, award the bid May 1st, July 17th, the trail along the river will be completed, June 30th, I'm sorry, June 30th, the playground will install, will begin, July 31st, on-street parking will be completed, August 31st, shelter and amphitheater will be installed, November 1st will be substantial completion, the upper park, that'll include the sports court, the ice, the ice rink and also the trails. And then April 26, 2024, second substantial completion for the bridge and the south end of the park. Do you have any questions?
I have a few.
Yeah.
You said the potential second restroom?
Yes.
On the north end?
Yes.
As of right now, that's not.
It's not in this phase.
Not in this phase, okay.
Yeah, but we're right on budget with the items that I mentioned.
So the plan is for a second restroom there though at some point?
That's, that's the recommendation from the, the landscape architects.
Okay, yep. And then the trees along Oak and Prospect are being completely removed and then replaced in the park?
Just re, we're going to remove, move them, they'll put a sidewalk there and we'll put them on the other side of the sidewalk. So hopefully.
Okay, so a couple of feet.
Yes, I, yes.
And then this one is a question from someone, is the bouncy horse staying in the park where there's a little bouncy horse? It's been a hot topic.
Yeah, all, all of those, some of those smaller things, we could see if we can, we can relocate them, but it is not planned in this project.
It's not planned to keep it, okay. So what would be the plan for those if they are removed? Are they just recycled or, or playground committed?
Yeah, just recycled, yeah, yeah.
If they're being safe, can we put them on the auction? I think some people have some interest in those.
If they're, if they're safe, we could throw them in, in the auction, that's correct. If we can remove them safely and keep them in one piece, yeah.
All right, thank you, Nate. Any questions? Good, thank you. Input? Hearing none, no further discussion, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
Last but not least, item 38, would look for a motion to consider approval of letter agreement amendment number three with Riverwise Engineering LLC for the Johnson Park Instream Improvement Project for an amount not to exceed $40,800.
I'll make the motion.
Motion second. Steve or Nate on this? Steve?
Yeah, I'll take this one. This is amendment number three with Riverwise. They're the engineering company that designed the in-stream improvements, also known as the kind of the drop structures or the kayak trail. We had, we had oh, about 44,000 in the original contract with them for construction and observation services during the construction of structures number eight, seven, six and, and five. We saw an opportunity to save a substantial amount of money on the project. We saved $288,000 in costs on those first four structures, but in so doing, we had to consume the extent of, of their construction observation budget. This, this brings another $44,500 for construction observation services for Riverwise for the remainder of structures five, five is about 80% done right now, but structure five, four, three, there's also two diversion structures in there that, that will get struck, constructed with rock, what I want to say, rock, erosion control. There's also the First Street Underpass that connects structure four into structure five, the railroad input in the Winter Park, or railroad put in, in Winter Park put in. We're very confident as staff that there's at least $200,000 in additional savings in rock in that project, very similar to what we saw in the first product, first four structures. But in order to achieve that savings, we have to expend additional observation through Shane to get there. Any questions?
This is, this an amount on top of what you were talking about of a savings before then?
That's correct, yeah. I did, yeah. So where I'm talking here, 200, I think it, I think we could be approaching 250 in savings on these next two structures. That's in addition to the savings we talked about by combining structures one and two. We've learned a lot, you know, Pat, Pat, Pat Boyle's very engaged in that project and working with them. He's on site a lot there, but we're not, we're certainly not river improvement people. So our ability to make sure it's getting done and getting done right and is going to last is, is limited.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Any further questions? Any input? Hearing seeing none, please vote.
All council members present voting in the affirmative. Motion carries.
All right, and no closed session this evening. So that concludes this meeting of the Norfolk City Council. We are adjourned.